We're about to call this meeting to order. I'm going to, before we do, I'm going to ask everybody, we do have a big crowd in here, and I know that many of you are in here for several different reasons. So, we're going to try to cater some of this a little bit, to make sure that everybody feels a part of this. But at the same time, I want to remind everybody that there is a certain etiquette that goes in here, so I'm going to ask you to please be respectful. We'll definitely be respectful to you. I'm going to ask that there are no personal attacks. We won't be making any on you, and if there are any personal attacks, I will have to use my gavel tonight and have you removed. Or if there's anybody getting aggressive with words, then I don't ever want to have to use my gavel, but that's what it's there for. So, I just want to remind, I don't think I have those type of people in here tonight. I think I have people that are civil and I just want to deal with the issues. So, again, I just want you to be mindful of that, but let's please be respectful tonight, and we'll try to have a productive meeting, and make sure that everybody's questions are answered, and as many needs possible is met. So, with that being said, council meeting number fourteen is now called to order, July twenty first, two thousand and fourteen, at five thirty-three. Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathleen, roll call.
Shockley.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Fleming.
Here.
McCambeau.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Okay. First on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda. All matters listed under item one consent agenda, having been discussed or considered to be routine by the city council will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. Can I have somebody shut that door for me, please? Thank you. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent agenda tonight, we have finances and miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims. We have beer, liquor, wine and cigarettes, reports and bonds. We also have three resolutions. One, resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. The second is a resolution approving agreement with Applemeier Fish Power Ingberg and Helling PLC for professional attorney services. The third is a resolution approving lease agreement for the home at seventeen twenty Dill Street. We also have three public hearings set for August fourth. The first is a consideration of an ordinance amending various sections of chapter one sixty-two Fire Prevention Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. The second is a consideration of an ordinance rezoning the property locally, or located east of Osborne Street between Franklin Street and Mount Pleasant Street from M one Light Industrial to R three two Family Residential Zoning District. And the third is a consideration of an ordinance amending section seventeen point seven five point one zero four District Signage Regulations of Title seventeen Development Program Zoning Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to have one of these removed from the consent agenda? I see none. Is there anyone from the council?
Nope.
Okay, let's take it to vote.
I have a motion to approve all listed items under item one consent agenda.
Second.
Kathleen.
Shockley.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Okay. This is the time set for hearing for consideration of a sale of property locally known as one fifteen Golf Lane, City of Burlington, Des Moines County, Iowa. Publication has been made in the Hawkeye as prescribed by law. Those four are against, can be heard at this time. ET?
Thank you. Property's showing up on the screen there. It's one fifteen Golf Lane, and actually, we are delaying this sale tonight. The respondents of the property have set a motion to set aside, claiming they're allegedly served on the matter. Through our process, we did provide certified mail to the bank that held the trust on the property, and did follow all the procedures per chapter six fifty-seven A of the state code to acquire the property as an abandoned property. It has been vacant since two thousand and eleven, but do have to delay it based on that motion from their, from the respondents on the property. I guess our response to them did lay out the timeline and procedures that we did follow, and do have to set a new hearing to hear that before a judge. So, we do expect to bring this back up in the next month for sale, but unfortunately, we do have to delay it tonight.
Okay, so we're just going to open and close this, then?
I have a motion to close.
Second.
Okay, Kathleen?
Shockley.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Okay, that's been closed. We will keep moving. This is the time set for hearing for consideration of a sale of property of lots, lot one seventy-three, one seventy-four, and one seventy-five, original City of Burlington, Des Moines County, Iowa. Publication's been made in the Hawkeye as prescribed by law. Those four are against, can be heard at this time. ET, can you give us the backup on that as well?
Yeah, I guess just on the previous one, we will republish and put that notice on our website when that comes back up for Golf Lane. But on lots one seventy-three, four and five, original city, we did have a proposal from a company looking at constructing a new development on this lot. It was contingent upon receiving a grant. That project was not one of the two selected to move forward for the grant, I guess, application through this recovery funds. So, they did decide to remove their proposal, so they are not interested in purchasing those lots, since they won't be moving forward with the grant. So, we would recommend delaying the sale of this as well. It is a site that was talked about as a possible location for a lift station as well.
Good, good.
And since we didn't receive any other proposals prior to tonight's meeting, we would recommend not selling this at this time as well.
Good deal, good deal. Is there anybody from the audience that has comments in regards to this topic? I see none. Anyone from the council?
One of the things I just wanted to let you know, the memo I just handed out is from Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Council. This has an overview of the four projects that were submitted. The one that's under discussion tonight is one of those four. It gives the recommended two projects that they have for going forward to seek funds for. This was not one of the top two scoring projects, and the memo outlines some of the criteria they used for that decision. Some of that has to do with how projects line up for favorability on a statewide basis for ease of getting funds, and how compatible they are with what the intent of the funding is for, which is rehab of existing, I mean rehab of existing structures really fits more in line and scores better for the intent of what these funds are than what the new construction does.
Okay. Any other comments from the council? Okay.
Motion to close.
Second.
Excellent. Kathleen?
Shockley.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
All right, moving right along. I'm going to wait till everybody, we've got a group coming in.
Should I have over somebody pressing?
You know, if this was an issue all the time, we would be looking into getting bigger If, it is pretty tight. If you do have to leave the door open, I'm just going to ask that those that do stand outside the doorway, that we keep it down, otherwise we'll have no choice but to, but to shut the door. So, I'm just going to ask that everybody, please just be respectful of your volume. Okay, we're going to move along. This is the time set for hearing for a consideration of a CDBG downtown facade improvement grant. Publication has been made in the Hawkeye as prescribed by law. Those four are against, can be heard at this time. ET?
This is, I guess, ongoing project. We required funds a couple years ago for a downtown facade improvement project, looking at a three hundred, four hundred, and five hundred blocks of Jefferson Street for projects to improve the facades within. It was a five hundred thousand dollar grant through the CDBG with an owner match required as well. We're finally at the stage of getting bids for the project and moving forward with construction. I guess the timeframe moving forward, looking at getting council approval tonight, big bid packages released tomorrow, pre-bid meeting and site tour on July twenty ninth at nine a.m., starting here in City Hall. Bid opening August twelfth, and then awarding bid at the August eighteenth city council meeting, so hopefully we can see some construction this year yet on it. Do have some images, might be hard to see from the project, that show some of the projects. A lot of the projects are, not a lot, but some of the projects are windows, doing some brick repair work that aren't as noticeable as others. Some are major storefront reconstructions that'll be very noticeable and improvement. As we go through the project, can kind of highlight just the locations of these. This is the Art Guild Building at three oh one Jefferson, three ten Jefferson, looking at primarily windows, window work and some facade improvements. The style teak on Jefferson as well, Law's Jewelry at three nineteen Jefferson, three twenty Jefferson, at the corner of Fourth and Jefferson, long time vacant building, four oh three through four oh five and four eleven Jefferson, four thirteen Jeff, four thirteen slash four fifteen Jefferson Street, four seventeen Jefferson Street, four nineteen through four twenty-three Jefferson, four twenty Jefferson Street. The city's project will be five oh one Jefferson Street. That's the city's contribution is the senior center, new facade on that. Five twelve through five twenty-two Jefferson, the bookend buildings and the center building. And five fifteen through five seventeen Jefferson Street is the final project. I know it's hard to see up there. We do have plans. I have plans in my office, or the city clerk has plans as well, if you want to view those a little more in detail. But that's a summary of the projects that are included in this, and like I mentioned, a lot of it is windows, brick repair, but there are some significant facade improvements as well that will really have a great impact on the downtown once it's all completed.
Okay. Is there anybody from the audience that has a comment in regards to the facade grant? Please come to the, I'm sorry, Mr. Freebert, I already, I called that gentleman first. Please state your name and your address, please?
John Fenton, thirteen thirty-two Griswold Street, Burlington, Iowa. I would like to know what the cost to the city is on this.
The city's match is the Steamboat Senior Center. It's a sixty thousand dollars is our local match, and that will improve the facade on the property.
Okay, that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Just wanted to say it's been a long time coming. I think we started this process December of two thousand and eight.
I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, Steve Freebert, Executive Director of Downtown Partners. We started this process in December two thousand and eleven, so I'm glad to finally get to this point, and I'm looking forward to seeing the work finally start. When work, it does begin, maybe later this summer, early fall, we'll schedule a three-block free open to public walking tour to talk about the work that's going to be done on the different buildings.
Okay. Any other comments from the audience? Any comments from the council?
Yes, I have a comment. I just wanted to make it known that I own one of these, actually that building, five seventeen Jefferson, and I will be abstaining from the vote on this because of that.
Okay. Any other comments from the council?
Long time coming.
It's been a while. I thought it was supposed to be done last year.
Happiness all around, hopefully.
Okay. All righty then, let's, can I get a motion?
I have a motion to close.
Second.
Becky Shackley.
Shockley.
Aye.
Anderson.
Epstein.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
So, a resolution approving a CDBG downtown facade improvement grant.
Second.
Kathleen?
Shockley.
Aye.
Anderson.
Stain.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Okay. The ayes have it, moving right along. Okay, okay, there you go. This is the time set for the hearing for consideration of a Burlington owned, Burlington owner occupied rehabilitation grant project. It's a CDBG number eleven HSG zero zero five. Publication's been made in the Hawkeye as prescribed by law. Those four are against, can be heard at this time.
I'm Sarah He Cox with the Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission, and we are administering the CDBG grant for the City of Burlington. Up there is the map that the targeted neighborhood is for this program. And basically, the point of the public hearing is to address the council, so they know what's going on with the project, and to see if there's any public comments. The grant was for three hundred and sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars, and to date, we've spent a hundred and ninety-one three eighty-five. Homeowners can receive up to twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine in construction costs, and then up to thirty-five hundred in lead safe work practices. All the homes have to meet the Iowa minimum rehab standards when complete, and the homeowners have to be low to moderate income families. We have five projects that are complete, four that are under construction, and one project we're working on the bids for. And then the end date to this grant is September thirtieth of this year. So, in your packet, we, I just kind of gave a breakdown of the different projects that we've, that we've completed, and included a couple of the pictures, the before and afters, the projects for items like electrical siding windows, if they need new insulation, new roofs, and then of course, the lead paint remediation. So, the last couple of projects are the ones that are still under construction, that we should have complete by September.
And Sarah, just so everyone knows, is this a one hundred percent funded grant? Is the city making any contribution to this, or do you know?
The city is contributing, was it five thousand in?
Sidewalk repairs.
Sidewalk repairs. For the entire project?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
For the entirety of it?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Sarah, I think this is a great project. Where does the funding come from, from this? I think a lot of people are always curious about that.
The community development block grants come from HUD, and it's a competitive grant process that we apply for on behalf of the city. Only cities and counties can apply for those funds, and I believe they're due in the fall. They've kind of changed their dates, but it's a competitive grant. And then, once this one's closed out, the city can apply for another one if they have another targeted neighborhood they would like to apply for.
Thank you.
Is there anybody from the audience that has any comments in regards to this specific topic? I see none. Anyone from the council?
Nope. Motion to close?
Second.
Kathleen?
Shockley.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Now, let's see, where are we at here? We are, okay, this is time set for a hearing for consideration of an ordinance amending section thirty-one point zero one creation, composition of chapter thirty-one Riverfront Advisory Committee of the Burlington Municipal Code. Publication's been made in the Hawkeye as prescribed. Those four are against, can be heard at this time. Jim, are you going to address this?
Sure. The change that you have under consideration, this initially came from the Riverfront Advisory Committee requesting a change in language for how people are appointed. Our existing language allows, I'm on the wrong one, aren't I? This is Riverfront. This came up after the other one did. But they, they did, this group did have a request to, instead of have language that says residents of the city, to allow a portion of the residents to be from outside of the city, much like the one after this. We did make a, we did have a change that was being brought forward for you to consider. Language that's being talked about in here, part of it has to do with the city manager position on here as a non-voting member. The current language says city manager. This proposes adding for an individual appointed by the city manager to serve as that ex officio member. In the second part of that, instead of saying residents of the city, for the nine members of this commission preference, the language will now be preference shall be given to persons who are residents of the city, but members may be appointed who are residents of the greater Burlington area. The membership shall include a majority of residents residing within city limits, so no more than four members could be from outside of city limits.
Okay. Are there any comments from anyone in the audience in regards to this particular subject? Is there one? I see none. Any from the, from the council?
None here.
Mayors still think that the membership should be entirely made up of Burlington
I think we need to be mindful of that, of that thought moving forward. I think we need to be, I think we need to be very careful.
And, yeah, and I have a concern about this setting any kind of precedence, and I know it doesn't for some boards. Some boards are directed by code, how, you know, where the makeup would be from. But, you know, I mean, it's, I guess on this one, you can stretch it out and say that, you know, there's a fair amount of Riverfront, even though it doesn't really impact that part of it. I mean, but there are a lot of concerned citizens that live, and certainly, you know, three years ago, or five, four years ago, I would have been one of those, so I can appreciate that part of it. So, I hope it doesn't set a precedence that says that we're going to do anything else with any of the other ones after this.
I just want to reiterate again that Councilman Scott made a good point that I just think we really need to keep on our radar and be mindful of. I just want to, I want to stress that again.
But we've had some good contributions, I want to say, from some folks that are outside of the city.
Well said.
So, I don't want to, you know, not recognize that portion of it, so.
And I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you. Counsel, is there anybody else from the council that has anything to add to that?
No, not me.
Motion to close, your honor.
Second.
Okay, Kathleen?
Shockley.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Scott.
No. I'm sorry, was that one for close?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, now you get it in.
Okay. Motion for preliminary adoption, the first reading of an ordinance amending section thirty-one point oh one creation, composition of chapter thirty-one Riverfront Advisory Committee of the Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Kathleen?
Shockley.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Yes.
Scott.
Okay, ayes have it, moving right along. This time is set for hearing for consideration of an ordinance amending section thirty-seven point zero two membership, terms of chapter thirty-seven Renewable Energy and Conservation Advisory Committee of the Burlington Municipal Code. Publication's been made in the Hawkeye as prescribed by law. Those four are against, can be heard at this time. Point guard?
To start, this, this is the group that Renewable Energy Committee that had come and made a request for a change in language. The existing language in the code says that the resident, that the members of this group shall be residents of Southeast Iowa. They requested that the language be changed to, instead of saying of Southeast Iowa, to be of the greater Burlington area. The other part, through the discussions that have been had at the council level, the last sentence of this section for membership had originally said, or currently says, a membership shall include a majority of residents residing within the city limits. The goal with the change here would be to change that to the non-resident membership shall not exceed three members. And as a reminder, the reason that that was done that way is the way the structure of this group goes, it can be anywhere from eight to twelve members. And if you have more than three with that majority language, you can create some difficulties as the size of that group ebbs and flows.
Okey dokey. Thank you, point guard. Any comments from the audience? I see none? Oh, the piano man. Oh, come on, come on down.
Jerry Parks, I'm the chairperson of the Renewable Energy Committee. Just wanted to say, on behalf of the committee, we appreciate the council working with us. We think this is a very reasonable accommodation, and we've got, you know, at least one and probably a couple people that work in Burlington, but live maybe on the other side of the river, have a, have a strong interest and some strong background. So, thank you very much.
And I'd also like to add that I'm on that board, and the people that are on that board, they are, they are seriously committed to making a difference in this community. So, we're really blessed to have that, really blessed to have that board, and also to have the piano man holding her down. God bless you.
Okay, any comments from the council on that? Okay.
So, I have a motion to close.
Second.
Kathleen?
Shockley.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Scott.
Okay.
Did you, I didn't hear you. Scott?
Aye.
Sorry.
I'll speak up.
So, I have a motion at the hearing for the consideration of an ordinance amending section thirty-seven point zero two.
That was, I need the first.
You want the other one first? Oh, the, the motion for the preliminary adoption, the first reading of an ordinance amending section thirty-seven point oh two membership, terms of chapter thirty-seven Renewable Energy and Conservation Advisory Committee of the City of Burlington.
Kathleen?
I need a second.
Second.
Thanks.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kathleen, I apologize.
It's okay.
Are you wearing new jewelry tonight?
Yes, I am.
Shockley.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Okay, ayes have it. Ordinances. Becky Shockley?
I have a motion for the preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance amending section one six one point zero four Certificate of Rental Permit of chapter one sixty-one Housing Code in the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
ET?
No changes from the previous reading. I have not received any comments either way. I guess in opposition to this, so, but this again is a posting of the rental permit within each individual rental unit. That would show what the occupancy level is within the unit and the expiration date of the rental permit.
Okay, now are we fast-tracking that tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Sounds good. Are there any, is there anybody from the audience, I apologize, that has a comment? Anybody that does not have dark hair and a mustache? Is there anybody that, okay, okay.
Am I being specifically excluded?
No, I wouldn't dare do that. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Ben Brozine, and I actually live in Iowa City, but I run my business here in Burlington. I was not at the SEBO meeting where this was discussed, but Ron asked me to relay to you guys that while support isn't unanimous, most of our members get where you guys are coming from, and we support the change.
Thank you, thank you. And to think, I was going to say no to mustaches. God bless you, my friend, but, but, but thank you, thank you. That, all we're trying to do is to make sure that, that everybody is a- That, all we're trying to do is to make sure that, uh, that everybody is accountable, so, uh, we, we, uh, we appreciate, we appreciate them. Uh, are there any other comments in regards to that? Okay, uh, council?
None permitted.
No, I think it's a good idea.
I just wanna thank Eric and his staff for, oh, that would be Eric only, because he would be the staff that did this, for working on this and helping to move this forward. I think that this is a little bit of a start to try to hold, uh, landowners or building owners accountable and try to, uh, help make sure that we have housing that is inspected and, uh, legal and ready to use, so...
Okay.
So I also have a motion to amend this one, if there's no more discussion. So I have a motion to amend the motion for preliminary adoption, the second reading of an ordinance amending section one-sixty-one point zero four, certificate of rental permit of chapter one sixty-one Housing Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code to read as follows. For waiver of preliminary consideration and adoption of the second reading, and for final adoption of an ordinance amending section one-sixty-one point zero four, certificate of rental permit of chapter one sixty-one Housing Code of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Second.
Okay, so first and second, Kathleen?
Shockley?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay, now it's amended.
Shockley?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Okay. Coming to the end, I know that some of you, uh, are the Boy Scouts, are you guys here for the, uh, for the, uh...
They're here for, 'cause they're getting their badges.
Oh, you guys are getting your badges? Okay. Well, good for you guys, all right. They got all that stuff going on. Okay, uh, Mr. Fleming?
I have a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance, adopting a new section fifty-one point one zero A, carry and concealment of air guns and other realistic facsimiles of firearms of chapter fifty-one, public health and safety of the Burlington Municipal Code.
Okay, but Chief, I want you to...
Need a second.
Oh, okay, okay. Chief, make your way this way, but I, I wanna address a couple of things, and I feel like I have the right to address it right off the bat just because I, I took on, I don't know how many phone calls today, and I tried to address every one, and, uh, I returned over a hundred emails today, uh, and I still had some coming in, uh, as I was sitting here to make sure that everybody understands. Uh, there is a group that is giving out false information, uh, spreading propaganda that is not true. Uh, most of the, eighty percent of the emails that I returned, uh, the response was, oh, well, thank you for enlightening me, so let me enlighten everybody again before the chief, uh, breaks it down. We're not having a ban on guns. That, that, that's not what we're doing. We're not, we're not having a ban on toys. You can still have toys. My grandson has a cap gun that I bought for him a couple of weeks ago. I'm sure he's playing with it right now. It's yellow and orange, and it's cool. He loves it. That's, that's not the issue. The issue is, is that if you're having, and, and I wanna, I wanna reiterate this, because, uh, to me, the only people that would have a problem with this would be irresponsible people. Now, uh, again, I'm not trying to, uh, force this, we're here to, this is a hearing, so we wanna hear from you, but I want you to understand some of this, so that you have all the facts. It's not a ban. What we're saying is if in your, if you're in your own yard, somebody's private, uh, property, you can shoot each other if your mom, and say, that's okay, I wouldn't recommend it, but that's all on you guys in your own private property. But we don't want people walking, uh, we don't want people walking through town or thinking they can walk in, uh, the gas station or in Hy-Vee carrying a gun that is a facsimile, that's a replica, that looks like a real gun. I also wanna remind people that we live in a community, that there's a lot of elderly people in here. And I, I spoke with a woman, and, uh, she was scared. What had happened was, uh, some kids were on their way to go have some fun, they were playing. A young man had cut through her yard, and he had a gun exposed, and she, and it was a BB gun. They were gonna be playing some games. She thought it was real, and she got scared and nervous. Uh, uh, all I'm saying is, these are, these are many factors that we took into consideration when this was even brought up. It wasn't about trying to take anybody's rights, or, or trying to pry guns away. To me, I, I feel like, uh, every citizen should have the right, and this is just me speaking, but I feel like every citizen should have the right, and that's the last thing you would ever want to do, is take a gun from a citizen. That, you know, that, that's the last step, you know, it did, when that happens, uh, I, I think all of our rights have totally been stripped. That being said, this is geared toward youth and young adults that still haven't figured things out yet. And this city, in dealing with the youth, we have a curfew, not for adults. When you're an adult, you can enjoy the privileges of being an adult, but as, as a youngster, as somebody that still hasn't figured things out yet and still doesn't know how dangerous situations can be, uh, that's another safety regulation, that's another safety net that we can, that we can address, and, and the reason why we have those for youth, just like we have eleven o'clock as curfew and twelve-thirty on the weekends, i- is not to be mean to the youth, but let them know that there are, that there are rules and regulations, and when they get older, they can appreciate all the benefits that come with being an adult. Um, I don't feel like there's anything wrong with that. Now, I'm gonna get off my soapbox, and again, I wanna remind everybody too, my mind isn't made up. Uh, I, I wanna hear what, whoever's a proponent of this, whatever you gotta say, I wanna hear what you have to say, but this was done with, with, with several intentions in mind, thinking about the entire community as a whole. Uh, now I'm going to turn it over to Big Chief, uh, please elaborate, my friend.
Well, what I will elaborate on is, if you got a hundred, I think, we got every bit of that, but, again, it was the exact same thing. As we took the time to talk to the people that called, there was some propaganda email that was sent out, and when they understood that this really wasn't anything to do with the Second Amendment, or taking a gun, or a firearm, or ammunition of any sort, that's when the whole conversation changed. Well, we didn't realize that. We were told that you were actually enacting an ordinance that would limit the guns in your city, period. Well, that's not the case at all, it's just a matter of how you transport them from A to B, so, and we fielded those same calls today.
I appreciate that. Um, we may have to call you back up, Chief, but I'm gonna have you, I'm gonna see if we can get, maybe address some questions, if there are any from the audience, and I'll have you, uh...
Yeah.
Uh, address some of those, and then we'll, 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 uh, kinda move forward from there. So, uh, is there anybody from, from the audience? Okay, who is that in the back there? Is that Mr. Fenton? I can finally put a face to your, to your voice now, uh, come, come on down, sir. Yeah, weren't you the same guy that said this was all my fault today? Well, it's okay, it doesn't matter, I get blamed for something every day, it's okay.
I probably was.
Okay.
But anyway, uh, I'd like to know why...
Can you say your name and address, too, please?
Oh, it's John Fenton, thirteen thirty-two Griswold, Burlington, Iowa. I would like to know why you wanna pass this ordinance. And I know that Chief just explained it, but you've already got laws on the books for everything there, except kids. You're just taking it out on the kids.
That's a good point, Chief, can, do you, would you like to, would you like to, uh, address that, or...
But I'm not done, I'm not done.
Oh, okay, okay. Yeah, well, don't go anywhere far, just, yeah, stay close.
Now, to address that, what laws we don't have in place, the reason we're trying to do this is 'cause we don't have a law for this. I mean, we get, like I said, thirty, forty gun calls a year, and we come to investigate it, and here we have a kid, or, most of the time, and it's not all the time, but most of the time, it's a kid walking down the street with a gun tucked in his pants, and that leads to a call, and we want a way to deal with that. A way that we can make it assured that we're not having the same problem over and over and over. So we don't have a law to take care of this. I mean, we have a lot of laws for the illegal use of those BB guns. If you were to shoot somebody, or threaten somebody, or vandalize somebody's property, he is absolutely right. We have laws to cover all of that, but we don't have a law to cover how these are transported, and that's where we're getting all these calls, 'cause people are seeing this firearm. Like I said, the example of a guy walking through a yard with an airsoft, as it turns out, but it was an AR-15 assault rifle, and you can imagine the panic in the neighborhood that we fielded, and that all could've been avoided by a case, so...
But Chief, but can I just say something quickly?
Scut your microphone up, please, Mickey, just a...
What you, the example that you just gave was in someone's yard?
Yeah, they were walking through a yard, yards, uh, they come from a car and walk through yards to complete the story.
Okay, all right, so I'm just, I mean, I'm just pointing out that, that this is where some of the, the fear is coming in, is that, you know, on private property, people are not going to be allowed to do that, and you just fell right into it when you, I'm, I'm not trying to make you feel bad, but you fell into it when you said, just going through a yard, I mean, you're, you're...
I should've completed the whole story, that was a mis... It actually came from a car, that, out of a car with the gun, and through several different yards as they were walking along.
I mean, and that's, and that is where some of the fear is coming in from, so, and so certainly, uh, you know, when we read on here, it, it says a public street, alley, highway, sidewalk, public way, public ground, or public building, or within an, this, an automobile on a public roadway. So, I, I don't wanna, I just, I wanna stop you, I don't want people to feed into that before it gets too far. I don't want that to get legs and run somewhere, so...
No, thank you.
Not according to me, but that's my...
No, go ahead.
John Fenton, thirteen thirty-two Griswold, Burlington, Iowa. Uh, what, what I'm saying is, kids cannot take their toys to their neighbors' house without it being in a case, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, they just put it in a case before they, before they go there.
I know, but why should they have to?
Let, let me, let me, let me relay a question to you. Say you're, uh, you're a young man, probably younger than me, but say you're eighty-five years old, and, and you live alone, and, uh, you know that your body's failed you, and most of your fam- family and friends have passed on or don't live here, and you saw somebody walk through your yard with, with, with something that looked like a real gun. And now, it may not be, it may be some buddies just going to play, and if that's the case, then let's make sure that we don't have anybody calling freaking out, because I don't want anybody's grandparent calling thinking, somebody's trying to rob me. By gosh, if somebody's trying to rob, I want our police going there full bore, because somebody's trying to get stupid, but I don't want it to be because somebody was just passing through a yard. And I, and to me, again, if, if the citizens say, we don't want this, I'll, I'll listen to you, bu- but me, I don't, I don't feel like that's asking too much just to put it in a jacket, and that's all it is. When you get to where you're going, light it up, go ahead and do your thing, but I, I just think, I, I just don't think that's asking, uh, a whole lot.
Well, I, I'm gonna come back to that. I wanna know what the pop, the fine and the penalty is. What, what's all the penalties for this?
Okay, I'll, uh...
No, but what's the fine, and what's the...
I think it's a maximum fine of five hundred, maybe, if I'm not right, five or five.
I thought it was lower than that. And this isn't a money-making thing or a tool to harass kids, this is, uh, okay.
Or thirty days in jail, up to thirty days in jail.
Or up to thirty days.
I believe that you're gonna have a lot of unintended consequences. You're gonna be arresting kids for carrying their toys.
Do you have any other suggestions?
Yeah, forget this, forget this altogether, you're picking on kids and parents.
Well, make no mistake about it, that's never the antenna of a council to try to pick on anybody, and that's not what we're trying to do. I, I hope you understand the int... What's that?
I believe it is.
You believe that we're purposely trying to pick on kids?
Yeah.
Well, uh, I'll disa...
I really believe in it.
Okay, well, we'll agree to disagree, because, uh, I, I don't want anybody picking on my kids, why would I wanna pick on somebody else's? And I still have kids in this community that like to have fun, so, I mean, I don't wanna hinder my children, but, a- again, I'll say this, this is a hearing, we're taking everything into consideration, so, uh, noth- nothing has been, nothing has been done yet.
On your, uh, on the people who are putting out propaganda, was that a guy by the name of Aaron Door, Guns of America?
I, I, I won't, I won't say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Was that a man?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you guys two, please, I know we got a big crowd, and even if you get a bunch of people in there whispering, it just kinda blows up, so, uh, please, if you gotta talk, could you step outside for a minute, please?
Was that a man named Aaron Door with Guns of America?
I, I don't wanna address anybody's name, but I, but I do know that there was some, basically, I got a lot of phone calls from mothers, uh, saying, am I gonna get a ticket with my kid, right around my five-year-old kid, playing with a little water gun? You know, that we're gonna, you know, that it's, you're, you're banning toy guns. That was never, that never even came up.
Okay, well, I put three posts on Facebook today, and somebody deleted them. Of, of his letter to you, and he talked to you.
I, I, I got a chance to see that, and, uh, but I, I don't know if I addressed it the, the best way that I could. I had so many other things to address.
I don't think it was professional at all.
From me?
Yeah. If they would read the letter, they would know that, because of, because of...
You're saying that I did something unprofessional?
Yeah.
And what was that?
Explaining the, explaining the law and the fines and the, uh, co- the consequences.
I never did that.
Well, that's in his letter.
Okay, well, that's, that's somebody else that, anybody can say something from Facebook, we're right here, so you can deal with me one-on-one. I don't even know, and the guy who wrote that, he's not even from Burlington. Most of the people that were complaining around their mouth don't even live here. We know about our own problems here, and we'll deal with them right here in Burlington. That's why you lovely people are here tonight.
I understand. But he and I both think this is just a knee-jerk reaction, and it's gonna have unintended consequences.
We're considering that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I think, the Arizona T-shirt had your hand up first, and then we'll, we'll get, we'll get you.
Uh, my name is Paula Paul, uh, one thirty South Seventh Street. Listening to this discussion right now, when I heard, you know, you want a kid put his gun in a case, when it's in the case, I can't tell if it's real or not. So, you know, if I see a teenager running around with a gun case, I'm assuming it's real, and then I would be calling. So it's confusing.
Well, I, I guarantee you this, you, you'll be calling a lot sooner if you actually saw somebody running around with the gun, so, those are some of the, so, those are some of the things that are...
But I can usually tell if it's a toy gun or not.
What's that now?
I can usually tell if it's a toy gun or not.
Most people can't. Most people can't, they've got replicas that look, unless you've got it in your hand, and I'll tell you what, when you're on the other side of the hole, the barrel, uh, and you're nervous, you really can't tell, but I'll tell you, they make guns out there that look real, and, and only somebody that...
I, I grew up, my father was a gunsmith.
Okay, then you would know.
I'd gunned all the time.
Right, right, then...
But for me, it would confuse things.
But I'm saying, your father was a gunsmith, most people don't have that privilege, so...
Right.
So, we have to think about everybody at the same time, but I respect what you're saying, I, I hear you.
But, but, you know, if, if I'm confused because a, a teenager has a gun case, you know, you, most people assume a gun case means a real gun. So putting a toy gun in there could also get just as many calls as a, a toy gun that looks real.
Well, true, but I mean, if you had a real gun and had it in a case, you could, you could carry it, uh, so, I mean, it's, that, that falls into line, but, but, but I understand you, I don't wanna, I don't wanna drag it out, 'cause I know there's other people, but I am gonna ask you, uh, let, let's not be redundant. If you've got something new, we welcome it, we welcome it. Is there anybody that has another comment in regards to this topic? Okay, I'm gonna, we'll get you. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I apologize.
How you all doing? My name is Rosalind Thompson, and I'm from twenty-four five Washington Street, I Stone Garden. Uh, I think that that's a good idea, because you're right, it's so many guns that could be children's guns, but still, they look like real guns. Um, now, I think the best thing for them to do, if they're gonna have those type of guns, is to color-code it, because if they black or silver, we don't really know if it's a real gun or not. And so I think that is, you know, that's more of a good idea to have it color-coded, like my grandson have a color-coded.
Somebody else had mentioned that, and, and, um, I do think that's definitely, uh...
Consideration.
Uh, legitimate, uh, legitimate, uh, answer, so...
Okay.
Uh, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it. Now I, yes, sir?
My name is Bob Knoll from one seventeen South Roosevelt Avenue. I'm a resident and a business owner, and I guess I'll ask just a couple of questions. Is this all original language in this ordinance? Is there a template? Can we go to see what's going on? Because this lady's got a very valid point. The one problem you have, you can go to most of the major gun manufacturers, you can get a pink Glock, you can get a yellow Ruger, I think Doug, or Chief Bear will tell you that, the color has nothing to do with it. And if you walk into my place of business with a replica AR-17, or 15, or whatever, in a case, you're gonna get my attention immediately. So I think that's one of the things that the traps are gonna fall into. I would ask if we have the support of local law enforcement, both the sheriffs and the, and the police department on this. And again, is this all original language? Is there a template out there who's already doing this with great success? Why reinvent the wheel for something that's going to cause a lot of controversy?
I, I'm gonna defer, uh, most of this to the chief, but I will say this, uh, we, we never want to dictate the way we handle our business off of what everybody else is doing. Now, don't get me wrong, some communities...
Well, if there's a success, if there's something that's successful already.
Right, 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 but, but I just wanna say, what, what some communities do, and we see some positive things, we definitely try to glean from that, but that, but that also doesn't stop a community from being the first to do something either.
I just came back from a training class where we had a throw-down gun made out of rubber, and boy, if you would've seen that thing laying on the table, you would've sworn that was a, the real McCoy. So, I mean, there's some issues here, I think, rather than cutting new ground, if there's something that has already been out there, if there's something that has already been out there, and I don't, be, be redundant, that is successful, because you are, as most of people have said, you're letting yourself in for many more calls, I think. Because now, if I've got, and I hope it's gonna be somewhat age-related, if I see my general manager's little guy come in with something, and I'm not talking about transparent, um, water guns.
I understand what you're saying.
So, I, I think that should be a consideration, and, and if it's all original language, um, maybe it should be taken a, a little harder look before it's passed.
Okay. Chief, can I, can I just have you move over here and just stay by the mics, and that way you can just, you won't have to keep getting up and getting down if we have any other...
Well, that's a great comment. We, uh, got the advice from Patrick O'Connell, our city attorney. I looked up numerous city ordinances across the state, and we kinda combined those to make our own ordinance, but almost all the language in there is template language. I mean, one of the ordinances that we really liked was out of Marion, Iowa, and if you were to look at Marion's ordinance, you're gonna see that it's very similar to what we're trying to do. So, I mean, it is some template language. It's definitely not something that we just went out and designed.
Do you know, Chief Beard, how long has that ordinance been in effect?
You know, I don't know the date of that, Bob.
Maybe it might be some, just prudent to see what success they've had, or if they, it will tell you, "Man, our call rate went up six hundred percent."
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be happy to call them and ask.
Again, I, I would remind everybody that that's why, in situations like this, sometimes you kick yourself for government moving too slow. Uh, but at the same time, uh, it's, it's a good process when you, and I didn't forget about you. You can make your way on up this way, miss. Did, did you have your hand up? Uh, that, that this is a process. We do three readings on this, uh, to give opportunities... How you doing, mayor? Uh, to, uh, to speak up and, and say something so that we can make sure that we're hearing exactly what the people have to say about this, so if you'd state your name and your address, please.
My name is Rhonda Lee D. Wald. I live on twenty-two hundred West Avenue in Burlington. And if there's a fine, or the child's gonna be in trouble for pointing a fake gun, is there also a fine or some kind of law for a person who points a real gun at you, even though it is not discharged?
I mean, we already have laws in place for that exact question. I mean, you know, if you threaten somebody with a gun, it really doesn't matter if it's real or if it's a toy. I mean, the same laws would apply.
Okay, well, I had someone sighting their scope on my forehead, and I noticed it because something red was shining in my face. And so, he did this like four or five times, and so, I, I did call the police. And so, they came and talked to him, and he said he was sorry. "I'm sorry, you're pointing a rifle at my forehead, and you're sorry?"
Yeah, I agree with that.
I, I, there's gotta be more than "I'm sorry." I, I just think that's wrong. What, what if it was the mayor's wife sitting there? Would they've said they were sorry to the mayor's wife?
Uh, I'm not married.
Or anybody's wife.
No.
I'm saying-
So, so if they did, what does she look like?
Or anybody, anybody, but...
No, absolutely, and I'd be happy to look into that for you, if you could give us a call tomorrow or...
I did call the police department the next day and ask about it, and they said, "What were you doing?" And I said, "I was getting out of my car." And they said, "Well, that was stupid. You should've run in a zigzag pattern." I'm sorry, I'm fifty years old. I just got off work, had high heels on. I'm not gonna run in a zigzag pattern. And that was my response when I called and talked to someone at the office.
Like I said, please give me a call on that, because that's, that's inappropriate. That shouldn't have been said if it was said. That should not have been said.
Okay, all right.
We'd be happy to do that for you.
I just wondered if there was some kind of a, a fine or something for somebody pointing a real gun. That's what, really what I wanted to know. 'Cause that's not a joke. I was, it scared me.
Yeah, that's-
Of course, I'm old. I'm not gonna run anywhere, you know?
Oh, I wouldn't call you old, but, uh, I, I will say, regardless of your age, that's, that's not a good thing to do.
No, it was not. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there other, any, or any other comments in regards to, in regards to this topic from the, from the audience? And I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you guys two, please, uh, please keep it down for us. I, I, I know there's a lot of people in here and, and a lot going on, but uh, if you could, if you could help us on that.
Good evening. Amy Beavers, Des Moines County Attorney from Burlington. Unfortunately, I didn't get to participate in the work session, so, but I did read the ordinance, and I just wanted to come tonight with a few comments um, that maybe you might consider. Um, and, and there's been some discussion tonight about, uh, that you want these guns cased. Um, it's not really defined in the statute what kind of case that you're looking for, and so I had written some notes. Um, I think they could probably even be carrying it in a backpack, or a duffel bag, or a purse. Um, and so, if that's, if they, or they have it in a fanny pack, that's not clothing, so that would not, uh, be prosecutable under the statute. Um, I also wanted to know, is there going to be an application process for people to obtain your consent?
I, I'm glad you said that, because I wanted to address that. Uh, I received several comments saying, "So, uh, we, you're banning all the guns unless the city council gives you permission." That is not the truth. That is not the case. And, and every, and every ordinance, uh, you'll find, I would think just about all of them, that you would find at the very bottom, it was, it would, it's going to end with, uh, with permission from the council. That's written in there, that's written in there as a safety, so if there is a special event, we don't have to have a meeting to make sure that we allow for this special event because of an ordinance or something that we set up. Um, you know, say, you know, say we set it up, and there, you can't have a paint gu- paint gun, uh, and, and city limits, but yet, or using a paint, uh, gun in, in public, but yet we're having a paint gun, uh, deal down here in downtown Burlington, so... Uh, so we wouldn't have to go back and do something special to allow this. That's why that stipulation is in there. It's not because people bring a permission slip and say, "Hey, I'm special, so council, can I get this?" That, that's the furthest thing from the truth, so let me address that. And just for future reference, on an ordinance where it says, "Get permission from the council," it doesn't work that way. That just means that if a special extraordinary circumstance comes up, we have an opportunity to do something in the community, and it would actually, uh, uh, hamper or step on the toes of an ordinance that we set up. We still have left ourselves some room that we can, that we can follow through, so I just wanna make that perfectly clear so everybody understands that.
Will there be some document, though, then, provided to someone that gets consent? Will that be provided to law enforcement? So, if they're called out on a complaint, they will have a copy of this permit or...
That's not, that's not gonna be an individual deal. That would be like a, again, that would be like a tournament or something like that. You know, you have to go through the city. There, I can't think of any special deal where we would say, "Okay, one person is going to allow to be able to carry this and walk around with it freely." This would be for an event that we, that, that would change this rule, just like we set up in every other thing. It would be-
I understand. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead.
Oh, no, speak, speak freely. I, I'm, I'm fine.
Okay, well, it's just, it's not clarified in the statute, and so that's why I was asking these questions, if there's gonna be a policy in place then that says that, that it will be mostly for events. Um, are you gonna have something written? Because these are elements that I will have to prove in court to prove someone guilty. And if they raise a defense, you know, I, I obtained written consent from the council or-
Can I interrupt you?
Yes, absolutely.
How do you feel about it?
How do I feel about it? Um, I, I understand why people are concerned, because I do agree. A lot of these toy guns look very real. Um, and so, there is a great deal of concern, um, with some of these. I, I don't think it's going to all necessarily be young people, because the statute is going to apply to everyone.
Sure.
So, if, if a parent is carrying their kid's toy gun around, and it's not cased, they would be, you know, it's a prosecutable offense for a parent to be carrying it around on a public right-of-way. Um, I also think some of the words in the statute, it, it talks about in a vehicle, and the way the statute's worded, in my opinion, I, I think I know what the intent of the statute is, but unless it's in their clothing or open in the vehicle, it's not prosecutable either, if it's under the seat or in a console. So, I, I think some of that might just need to be changed a little bit. If your intent is if it's anywhere in a car, that might need to be tweaked. But, um, you know, it's, it's not necessarily for me to decide, you know, whether it's an appropriate law or not. I just enforce the laws that you give me, so...
We appreciate your input. We appreciate your input.
And, you know, I'm happy to help in any way I can. I'm not here to criticize. I just more had questions about it. Um, and also, the, uh, reference to just the Iowa code, and, you know, pertaining to the, um, casing and transportation of the guns. Uh, there's different Iowa code sections that might apply. There's hunting regulations under four eighty-three. There's also, uh, other gun regulations under Iowa Code Chapter seven twenty-four, and so I don't necessarily know which of those that you're referencing in this statute.
What was that, what was that, number four seven twenty-four?
Four, Chapter four eighty-three and Chapter seven twenty-four. So, I think it would help me if you would specify exactly what type of regulations you're, you're talking about, about the transporting. Um, and I'd, I'd be happy to talk to Chief Beard about that, too, and, and Mr. O'Connell does a great job, so I'm not questioning his ability either here. I, it's more questions for myself as to what your expectations are when we get these cases, so... Those were the only questions I had, and, like I said, I can talk to Chief Beard and, and sort through some of this information.
I wanna say, thanks, thanks for taking the time and coming down, and, uh-
Yeah, thank you.
That means a lot. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Uh, is there, is there anybody else from the audience that has a concern or comment in regards to, uh, the pellet guns? Any, anybody besides Mr. Fenton? Mr. Fenton, you had your hand up first. Come, come on down, and then I'll, then I'll take you, okay, and, and then we'll take you. I'm gonna ask you again, please, uh, let's try not to be redundant, uh, but we, we do, uh, value what you have to say.
Okay, I got three things. Uh, real quick. Uh, I think you're passing a law to pass a law, but being that, being as I said that, I think you oughta table this and go back and learn some more stuff about it.
You may be right.
You're gonna fill her, her courtroom up.
Well, and, and that's not the intent either. Uh, that's why, again, I just wanna remind you, uh, Mr., can I get, can I get those to come in and shut that door, please? Can I get that door shut, please?
And, and then, one that hits home, and I'm not criticizing anyone in the city. But are you trying to make this for safety? For the city?
To me personally, I can only answer for myself. When I, when I heard it, I, I thought of, uh, safety. Uh, I thought of excessive calls. I thought of, uh, the elderly that, uh, that, you know, they, uh, could be out in their yard or their garden or something and see somebody walking with something like that. We, we, we've got, we've got, uh, a right to carry, so, uh, to me, you know, you, you can carry guns in Burlington, but we only want the, only the serious need apply it. My thing is, if you're carrying something that resembles a gun, it oughta be a gun. And you oughta be responsible, and you oughta have, uh, the paperwork to prove, uh, that you have the right to carry that gun. And, uh, I do. One of the big things is, yes, I'll have to admit from me, is that we do have a lot of older people, and, and I don't want 'em getting scared. And I, you know, I don't want 'em seeing people just walking around when kids are just having fun, and it's no big deal, and then they're frightened to death because they think maybe somebody's trying to get in their house, and that, that bothers me. And, and the thought, if I can keep somebody from not being, uh, being scared out of their wits, just from asking somebody to, if you're transporting it, put in a garbage bag, put in something, you know, put in a backpack, and then you get over to your buddy's house, do what you want. That, again, I'm not saying I'm right, John. I'm just letting you know, that's how I feel about it. And I'm, and I'm telling ya, I know a lot of people that their parents are still alive, their grandparents are still alive in this community. And they've, they've worked all their life, they've done all that stuff. They shouldn't have to worry about feeling, uh, being afraid, and I think uh, some of the decisions that we need, that we make, some of them need to be catered around them.
Now, will this override my carry permit? Can I have it laying out in the seat myself if I have a toy gun?
Chief?
No, your, your, your carry permit's valid for this ordinance as well.
But these guys don't know, and they're passing a law.
Well, it says it right in the ordinance.
It does?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I didn't see it.
Uh, excuse me, I, I wanna answer, though, the question you said, too, because I wanna tell you what it means to me. I guess for me, I was more worried about a young adult or someone who has a facsimile gun, and somebody else is so afraid of it that they, they, they do something to that person because they think there's a threat of a real gun. And I just wanted to answer, 'cause my answer was different than the mayor's.
There's several variables. Thanks for bringing that up.
But you know, my intent, or my opinion, is you're making a law for no reason, and I just, one other thing I'm not criticizing. You wanna make the city safe by making this law. I think that you better talk to your police department the way they schedule employees to be on the job on busy holidays. That will make the city safer.
I'll, I'll tell you what, um, I, I don't, I don't wanna get on that one. Uh, we've got, uh, full, full confidence in our chief. Uh, every, everybody can be caught unawares or are caught off-guard once in a while, uh, and we weren't prepared for the, the domination of fireworks. I'll tell you what, in my neighborhood, it's quiet, and they were letting them off till eleven-thirty at night. Uh, it, it was just one of those things, but I guarantee you this much, it won't happen again.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Is there anybody that has something, okay, okay. And I do wanna say, I appreciate you guys, uh, you're being respectful and, uh, uh, thank you so much. State your name and your address, please.
Sean Gerhart, one thousand Spring Street in Burlington. Uh, kinda runs in tangent, but maybe along the lines of, uh, on the backside of this, we're probably gonna anticipate a higher call rate, higher police load. Now, a couple weeks ago, when we had the little meeting down on South Hill about the Circle K incident, one of the first things Chief Barrett said was that, "Okay, we need to revisit our over, overtime." Has, when's the last time a study was done on the overtime rate for the police department? Because every time budgets come around, that seems to be the first place to take a hit, police department, fire department. How many hours overtime can you work before you can go ahead and put another guy on the shift?
Point taken. Thank you for bringing that up.
You bet.
Thank you. We'll ta- we'll, we'll take, uh, what kinda hat do you got on? Come on down. What is that? Okay, my eyes aren't as good as they used to be.
My name is Robert Sirewin. I live at seven twelve South Twelve Street, Burlington, Iowa here. I understand what all going on here with your guns. You know, my kids play with guns. I have carry permit, too. But I don't go carrying my gun out. That's one of the things they teach you not to do. You put it to your side, you hold it to your side. You got rules, what it should be. If you're out at nighttime with a gun, you're up to no good anyway, if it's after dark. And all you do is scare people to have it, so you make it a law, just like a pistol. It is made to hit you in the eye, can poke you, put your eye out with an airsoft gun. Paintball gun, I can do the same thing. I could possibly kill you if I'm close enough, if I freeze it. Okay, if you're out hunting, you only go to a certain time. If you're out after that time, all you're out to do is for no good. So, you need to make a law on the times, and you know what? It should be treated. If you have this firearm, Illinois is that way. If you have a toy gun, it needs to be in a case, just like you treat it as a real gun, not loaded or anything. You just treat everything like that, 'cause somebody pulls out and comes to my, up in my house with a play gun, you're liable to get yourself shot. It's just plain simple, you know what I mean? 'Cause look at everything going on. Everybody's getting robbed. I got friends of mine right now that wanna go out there, go out and act like they're drunk, be stupid all night long, out in the streets in the wrong places, have them come and rob them. They just wanna shoot 'em. They got a permit to carry.
Well, we, we, that's, that's the last thing we need, is people trying to do vigilante-type of thing.
Yeah, we don't want that. I understand that. But with your gun rights, with their pistols and stuff, they need to treat it just like a real gun. Because at nighttime, you, you have a curfew on kids going out late night. Put a curfew on them, too. Kids only play during the daytime. You know what I mean? If you got it hidden here, you're out trying to scare somebody, you're trying to steal from somebody, you're hiding it for a reason. You know what I mean? There's no reason to hide it if you're supposed to have it.
Point taken.
So, you gotta look at them kinda things, and you're doing all this.
Thank you, Bob. I'm, I listened to you, and you're, and you're even wearing a Cardinal shirt. I, I still listen to what you had. Hey, no, I'm just kidding. I, I like the Cardinals. Is, are there any other comments that have not been addressed that, that, that somebody feels they need to before we... I'm sorry, sir, I forgot about you.
My name is Keith Terrell. I live at one twenty-seven Greenwood Drive in Burlington. I'll be real quick. I just have one concern. I was just up at the Shields Sporting Goods Store in Iowa City several days ago, and they had an entire case of every kind of tutti-frutti-colored gun imaginable. They had pink ones, yellow ones, green ones, every color imaginable.
Real?
Real, for real. Uh, mostly small caliber, but up to and including, uh, two-twenty-three assault rifles. My concern is that, that, is that, that confuses the line between toys and real guns. And, and some of the larger cities, kids have already gotten themselves killed that way because of police confusion. And my concern, and a lot of that is beyond the city of Burlington. But my concern is that whatever law gets passed takes into account what gun manufacturers are actually doing, and that there is no longer, there is no longer a clear, it's clearer distinction between what is a real gun and what is a toy gun as there used to be. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Keith. Thank you, Keith. Okay. If there's no other comments from the audience? Any comments from the council?
I have the, go ahead, Becky.
Well, I guess, I, I guess I wonder if, if we have it exactly right, written exactly right. I guess that's my, I just...
But I had some early concerns, and I addressed this early on about when we put laws like, when we put new things on the books, we, and, and this is- when we put laws like, when we put new things on the books, we, and this is not, this is directed at all ages, but we have, I mean, we've just become a society of criminalizing things to the point where we're criminalizing youth, we're criminalizing adults. Some of our common sense has gone out the window on, on some of it, and that was one of my concerns early on, was that, that it, that this was just another way to criminalize things. And we're asking, we're saying things like, "Well, they can use their judgment." "Well, I don't think we're gonna do this." But, but it's there. We, we can't know what is gonna happen to this. And so I think we need to be real clear before we think about putting these in. And, and now I have another concern about the fact that the wording is maybe not as clear as we... If you have to take a law and you have to add the phrase, "I think this is what they're going to do to it," then you need to clarify it. It is not something you should vote in, because you're asking human beings to clarify something that you're making up. You're putting it in place and you're gonna ask some different person to interpret and to do that. And so now I have a concern that we, you know, this is, this is kind of a foggy thing, and you know, quite frankly, I don't think that we're ready to move forward on this, and I think we need to revisit this. We don't, we don't have plans in place for, and Shane, you said, you know, the intention is, you can get written consent, but here's what the written consent is for. Well, okay, you had, just now had to add to that in order to clarify something that you're trying to put in that's not clear to begin with. And so if you have to add something to it, then it's not where it needs to be.
And in regards to that, that's on every ordnance. I'm just saying, that's on every ordinance that, that we pass. There's always going to be that, because it's left in there as a safety net for special events and those sort of things.
For instance, we have a noise ordinance, and in that ordinance, there's a plan on how you can get, how you can take care of the exception to the ordinance. In other words, it says, you know, this is where you apply, this is what you do, and this is how you get this. So whenever we have those kind of exceptions, we have some type of, of method for taking care of the contingencies that are already built into the ordinance.
I just think you're being confrontational with me, that's all.
And I am. And, and, but I do have, I mean, I, I just have, I have such a concern about it. I worry about the wording where it says "within an automobile." I mean, it really... Listen, you get a police officer in a bad mood on the right day, and they're gonna slap you down and say, hey, here you go, got another ticket for you, I'm gonna find you. And I just, I just want to have another one on the books to do that.
You've got plenty of you, huh?
And I appreciate...
From the audience where, I'm sorry, but we already, we already opened that up and we closed it.
I appreciate the county attorney's, county attorney coming here, because I think that made it real evident that there are things about this, the way it's written, that are gonna be a problem. And I think we need to work on it more, I think, to get the right wording, to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish.
Let's vote.
Tim, you got anything you want to add, or?
I was just gonna say, I think we can kick it back to the chief. He's, I think he's hearing what we're saying or what the council said, or what the citizens have said. You're doing it for the, I think he's doing it all for the right reason.
I think so too.
There's some tweaking. Let's get it right and take it back and reword it.
Yeah, I'd be happy to give it to Patrick and Amy and see if there's, I mean, if you want to bring it back that way, that's fine. That's no trouble.
I, I think, I think it's the right thing to do. I just think we want to get it right.
Okay.
I want to say thank you to those of you that did participate in this conversation, even to John Fenton. He talked about me on the radio today, but, but, thank you. That's important. This is your opportunity to make sure that, that we have a full, a full understanding, and that comes from, from everybody to make sure that we try to do the right thing. So we're, we're not trying to create laws just to have them. That's, that's not the intent. We just want to try to do the right thing. So let's move forward on that then. Who's that? Oh, okay, this was just, this was just the reading, so we will act on that accordingly. Okay. Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Shockley?
No.
Anderson?
No.
Fleming?
Hi.
McCambell?
No.
Scott?
No.
That's a smackdown, Bob, right there, buddy.
Okay, Mr. Fleming.
You ready for the last?
Yes, sir.
Resolution to censure.
Second.
Okay. Give me just one second, please. Before, before we get into the resolution, it looks, apparently it looks like there's quite a few people here in regards to that. I want to, normally in this case, we would open it up to you all to have comments first, to save some time, so that we're, I don't have council people accused of things that they, they don't feel, believe, or have said. I think that it would only be right to, to start with us, and we'll make our statements, and then we'll, we'll entertain questions. And, and again, before we do, I'm going to ask everybody in your statements to be respectful. I'm going to ask that there are no personal attacks. If I have to use this, then, then the big fella over there already has the, the permission to, to remove you, but I, I don't want to remove anybody. Let's just take care of this as adults. I want to start by giving my, my statement. I'd like to state for the record that I don't think, or never have thought, Tim Scott to be a racist. I have never called him a racist, and I do not condemn Tim Scott. I'll leave that to God to condemn or not condemn all of us. But I do choose to separate myself from some of his comments and misrepresentation of facts and blanket statement made in regards to certain youth in our community. Now, in regards to the topic of crime, we don't care what color you are, what town you are from. If you want to come to this town to dirty it up, that big guy over there and his tag team of merry men, they will find you and we will prosecute you to the fullest extent of the law. And we are currently working in concert to eradicate some of the issues we are currently facing, and we will do that. That is, that is my statement at this point, and I'm going to, I'll turn it over to the council to, to make what statements you have to make, and then we'll entertain some questions. And ultimately, we will, we will give Mr. Scott, who, who, again, I will remind everybody, those of you that, that may not be happy with some of the things he said, do not condemn a man for a few things that he said. I sit by him, not because I have to, but... I can switch up the seeds, brother. The mayor can do that. I don't have a lot of things I can do, but I sit by him because I choose to, and I, I still call Tim Scott friend. I want, I want that to be stated for the record. Now, council? Mr. Fleming?
Thank you very much. Tim, my comment's very brief. I definitely did not approve of your behavior that night. I'm not gonna get into what you said or didn't say, but I think, you know, losing our temper, pounding on the table and throwing things is not acceptable. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilman Anderson?
Yeah, and I have a statement. Mine's kind of long, but some of this dealt with me, so I did kind of write it out, because I did want to cover what I want to say. That night, when Tim was ranting about this incident on the Fourth of July, you know, he was kind of looking this way, and I was shaking my head. He was talking about Circle K up on Maple Street, and I kept thinking he was looking at me, because I live in South Hill. I live in that area. And I was shaking my head yes, because when I went to bed on the Fourth, it was, you know, I could just hear that all around. And so I didn't disagree with what he said about that night. In fact, I talked to the night manager at Circle K, and I think what he said was close to what he said. But when he finished with that, he picked up a proposal that had been passed out that evening regarding a downtown development, and he said, "I'm not gonna support this. It's new construction," and then he threw it in my face and left the meeting. I didn't respond then, and I kind of feel like if I threw a paper at Tim in his face, I would get a response of indignation. But there was TV cameras on that night, and not just our TV, but another TV station. And so I didn't say anything, and I guess I thought, you know, as a woman, maybe I shouldn't say anything, or people will say, "I'm just saying this because I'm a woman." So I went home, and then when I got home, and the next day I got text messages and phone calls, and, and people were, were very upset with that. And they kept asking, "Has Tim apologized?" And, and, you know, and Tim didn't call me the next day and apologize. And if he had, I think I would have just, I think I'd said to people even here that, you know, I wanted this to go on, but he didn't call me. And, and then we had our meeting last week, and still there was no apology. And I guess, I think when Tim was talking about the incident at Circle K, he became very angry when he talked about young people firing bottle rockets at a policeman. And then when he throws papers and hits me, a councilperson, in the face, I think it's the same type of disrespect that he was talking about. And I think, you know, and, but I will say that last Wednesday he did send me a plant with an apology, but I kind of felt like after nine days, that I get a plant and something that says "I apologize," I didn't feel, I don't think that's what I wanted. I didn't feel it was sincere, because I know the mayor had urged him to send me an apology. I would rather see Councilman Scott pledge to control his abusive behavior at our meetings and to make an insincere apology to me. And I've considered Tim a friend, and I feel he can stop in my office at any time. But I, I just don't know why he feels that angry with me, I guess. Concerning the racial remarks of the TV station two days later, I felt that was, you know, we got a copy of that. And I guess I don't know what he thought he would gain by being interviewed by a Des Moines station and to make remarks, and maybe they took it out of context, but I just think he should have left it alone, you know, and not have those types of remarks come out from a councilperson in our community. And to me, the whole thing, as far as the censure, could have gone away if he'd called me the next day and apologized, and if he hadn't done that TV interview. It seems that some of the social media pages are trying to paint this as about being, trying to cover up crime. I think it's about holding Councilman Scott to the same critical scrutiny as he does others. And I hope that this censure will help Councilman Scott realize that there is an expectation from the people that he supports of a level of professionalism and civility in his position as a city council, and he will exercise self-control with dealing with, and about others. Thank you.
So I prepared a little statement too, just to stay on focus and not get swayed one way or the other. But the purpose of this censure is, is not to brand Tim Scott as a particular person. I've known him for a long time. I'd like to consider him a friend and us being on friendly terms most of the time. We disagree politically, and I think that's fine. I'm never offended by that. But this is to remind you that free speech does not allow you to shout "fire" in a crowded building when there is no fire. Free speech allows you to speak your opinions, but not without anyone being able to cross you or question your intentions or actions. You're not the only one who can have free speech. We all may have free speech. Free speech does allow me to call you out when I think you've crossed the line in actions or in statements, and free speech allows me to express my opinions and then face the consequences or criticism that may or may not follow. But I do want to remind you, Tim, that free speech comes with responsibility. And you're responsible for your speech and your actions. And this censure is to let you know that as a Burlington City Council person, I do not want to be attached to certain portions of your speech or actions. Your free speech comes with the notion that we're responsible for our words and actions, and your action towards another councilperson was not correct, and I don't want to be attached to that. You made blanket accusations about an incident which you did not have firsthand knowledge. You purported to have firsthand experience. You then followed up that statement regarding crime statistics in Burlington and pegging them on one ethnic group that are not true. To further bolster your false statements, you offered supporting statements to the media that were intended to look current, but were in fact, over a period of years. And what I'm saying is not political hyperbole. I just don't want you to lie to represent your opinion. You're entitled to your opinion, but stick with the facts. And that's really what I think you, that's how I think you should represent the city council, is with factual things. And I recognize that you have passion. I recognize you have a temper. I recognize we have problems in the city. But once again, you don't get to shout "fire" in a crowded room because you think you have free speech. I want you to get your facts straight, keep them straight, and to treat people with respect.
Councilman, I'm gonna give you the option. If you'd rather wait and entertain, then get the last word?
Wait.
Okay. Now, at this time, and again, and again, let's be respectful, so that we make sure that we're handling things the right and righteous way. Is there anyone from the audience that wants, that has a comment in regards to what was just said and not dealing with something that we just addressed? I'll start with you first, and then I'll take, I'll take you second in the back. Mr. Fenton, we'll, we'll take you, and I'll take the gentleman, I'll take the gentleman right next. I, I'm sorry, I can't see.
John Fenton, 1332 Gritswald Street, Burlington, Iowa. I'm proud of Tim for what he did. Could he have done it a different way? Yes, in the chamber, anyway. But I am proud for what he did at the gas station, because when you're endangering lives, it has to stop. And, you know, if you get heated because they won't listen, you have to stop it.
Appreciate your comment, Mr. Fenton.
He called the police department, and that's what he did.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. For the lady that I couldn't see, yes, you are too. You have to show me the nails. I can see your face.
My name is Debbie Smith. I live at 701 East Pennington in West Burlington. I attend Faith Temple, which is right next door to Circle K. Now, what I really want to say is that you really have to give respect in order to get it. You know, the comments that you made, Mr. Scott, you know, were really, really uncalled for. You know, I live in Burlington. I love Burlington, but I'm from Chicago. And it's a lot of other people are, that are, I don't do the things that some people do. So you can't label me as, as them people from Chicago, you know? I was hurt by that. But, you know, to call our children, and I'm a, I'm a godly woman, a bastard, that's not nice at all, you know? And I really feel that if it took you nine days to apologize to one of your council members, I mean, I'm still waiting for you to apologize to us, you know? I'm 58 years old, and I'm not a child, and I'm not them people. My name is Debbie Smith. I live at 701 East Pennington, apartment 224, West Burlington, Iowa. You know, apologize, you know? God is good. And don't take all of this. That's what, that's why we have problems now, because you say things, and we teach our children that things that come out your mouth, you can't take back, but you can apologize for them and let them know that, yes, I made a mistake, and we're all human, and God forgives, so we can forgive you also. But you got the first say that you want to be forgiven.
Okay, yeah, yeah. And, and I'm sure, again, that there's gonna be comments made that maybe some people are happy with. Let's, let's save the cheering for outside, too. I hate to be the, stealing all the fun away, but let's, let's just keep everything the same. I'll use the gavel. I sure hope I don't have to. Mr. Selman?
Reverend David Selman. I live at 226 South 10th Street. As a leader... Uh, as a leader in the community, there comes responsibility. Now, I think that as leaders, our council represents our community. And I think things should be done in accordance to better our community. Do we have problems? Yes, but we're not the only city that have problems. But I think there's a way to address issues and to look at things and as leaders we should have enough integrity to be mindful of our actions because we represent the people of the city. And I just, uh, I'm praying for you and hope that be mindful next time that as we represent our people, that we choose our words and deal with things in a proper manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm just a little confused by this. I'll go back to Ms. Smith. I'm from Chicago. I came here twenty years ago to start a business. I didn't think Mr. Scott was referring to me.
Can you, can you, can you?
Didn't refer to me at all. I mean, I'm not sure, I've known Tim Scott most of twenty years that I've lived here. Two of my kids worked at Scotty's. I've eaten, I was eating there many times. I hope they worked harder for you than they did for me. But I'm not sure why everyone thinks that he was aiming at anybody specific. The people that we don't want here don't pay taxes, don't contribute, and we don't want those people here. That's not anybody. We're not talking about purple Martians or teal colored Martians or anything else. So I'm not sure why everyone is insulted by what he said. Maybe the actions weren't those of a level-headed man at that point. But it was, but based on compassion and experience. So again, we all want the same thing. You'll recognize Mr., Mayor McCamber, I was at the church two weeks, two weeks ago.
I remember you.
I'm as concerned as everybody else is. This has nothing to do with anything but crime. Find the money, give this gentleman, give Chief Beard the funds to increase what he needs for a sufficient police department and let's get behind the community. It's really that simple. We have a great community, let's keep it great. And we all know what it takes to have a great community. We cannot, uh, we cannot foster an area that will support crime.
Uh, what creates a good community is everybody working together.
Absolutely. And thank you, all of you, for your service. And again, um, find the funds. Give Chief Beard what he needs. That's all I can say.
That we're working on. Again, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to let that slide because you can't, I get a, you can't, you can't, well, you can't, you can't, I can't say anything to a dad backing up his son. I, I can't say anything to him for backing up his son. But, but again, I am going to ask you, I know he's only got one dad in here, so let's keep it down. Do we, is somebody else coming to, uh?
My name is O.N.T. Sloan. I live at sixteen twenty-one South Fourteenth Street. I read a lot about this in the paper and it really surprised me, so I'm just going on what the Hawkeye said, so I, because the Hawkeye had something in today's paper that was totally wrong. If you looked in the today's paper where he said, uh, uh, public meetings, they said this meeting started at six-thirty. But if you read the article, it said it started at five-thirty. So I'm not going to go with what the Hawkeye said. I would like to know what was said, Mr. Scott, because I read some things in the paper that really offended me and I'm not from Chicago, it offended me because I'm a city, a citizen of Burlington, so that offended me. So what was, what did you say that the Hawkeye said you said and maybe you didn't say it? So I want to know. And then I'll, I'll have some, something else to say, if I can address that to him because I think we're talking about.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I just want to, uh, did you want to address that now or did you want to?
Well, it, I, I guess I owe it to Owen, but I'm, I'm not sure which part you're talking about, Owen.
Well, everything offended me. You're throwing the paper at, at one of your councilmembers? The words that I, the Hawkeye said you said about those little?
I'll, I'll, I will address all that, Owen.
Later?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, when you do, I'd like, maybe I could come back then?
Well, well, we'd, we'd like to, we'd like to give everybody opportunity. This isn't a, this isn't a court. We're, we're not.
Well, I understand that.
No, I, no, I'm, I'm not saying that to you. I'm just, I just want everybody to understand. This is, uh, all, all we're doing is we're addressing an issue and we're allowing everybody to, to be able to come up and, and say, to get some of their feelings off, off their chest, but.
Well, I understand that, Mr. Mayor.
Right, right. Well, let me finish though. But my, my point is since, since this is all directed toward Tim, I think it would only be fair to let him to at least be able to, to hear everybody out and then have the final word. That's what I'm saying. I, I probably will close that with Tim speaking and.
Well, that's fine. I'd like to say this.
But I mean, you're.
The previous gentleman said that he was, he was from Chicago and what Tim did didn't offend him because he wasn't from Chicago. But he should have been offended because he's a citizen and this, this, Tim Scott and the rest of you four are representing us.
That is correct.
So what you say affects us and offends us if there's something wrong.
That is correct. Uh, I'll, okay.
Freddie Sterling, uh, five seventeen South Seventh Street, Burlington, Iowa. And, uh, I do want to say this. I don't want to say anything, uh, because I consider Mr. Tim Scott as being a friend and I'm very sorry for what's supposed to have taken place. I'd rather hear it out of his mouth before I make my comments. That's what I'm asking. Because he, I feel like this hearsay of the Hawkeye led him, I'm, this is me saying this. I feel like I'd rather hear him say, he said what he said, he didn't say what he said, and then I would like to make my comments, if you would, Mayor.
I, I, again, I, I respectfully will decline. What I'm going to do tonight, I'm sorry, but, uh, what I'm going to do tonight, I'm sorry, but I, I have to make a call whether you like it or not. This is the call that I'm making. I'm going to, I'm going to let everybody make their, their, their comments. Now afterwards, if you guys, you, you got his email address, you can, you can do whatever you want to after that, but we're, we're not going to turn this to an all-night deal where it's an inquisition. That's not fair and I wouldn't want anybody doing it to me if I said something that was out of pocket. So I'm going to do unto others as I would have them do. I'm going to give, I'm going to give this man the right to have the last say. That's what, that's what I'm going to do at this meeting.
Excuse me, I understand what you're saying, but I mean, I'd just rather hear him say something, you know, before I make my comments. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying anything else. I have comments that I want, I can say, there are people.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask for order, please. I'm going to ask for order, please. Go ahead, Mr. Starling.
There are people here from Chicago. We've gone down this road before and I have quite a few members in, in the church that I pastor is from Chicago and I'm very offended with it. I'll, I'll let you know firsthand.
Mr. Starling, I have, I have several friends from Chicago as well that are hard workers, wonderful people. You know, I also happen to be black and have black kids in this community, so I, I understand. Let's, let's not think that, that I'm making light of it, but I, but I have a duty to make sure that I handle this procedure and this process the best way that I possibly can and to make sure that there's order. And I'm sorry, though maybe some of you may get mad at me, I'm going to give Tim Scott the last word. So if anybody has any comments, let's, now's your chance to get them out, but I'm still going to let Tim Scott have the last word and he'll explain himself and then you guys can make your comments or your judgments after that. That's the only way that I feel is fair, so that's, that's how I'm going to handle that. But you're, but you are more than able to make comments right now, uh, please do.
I don't have a problem saying something.
Yeah, to me, you should clear yourself up and then, you know.
I don't, I don't, I don't want to disrupt your, the way you want to run the meeting, Mayor, but I don't have a problem saying something.
But Tim, that's.
I, I, I want, I, I, I think, but I owe it to Freddie Starling.
I have had an opportunity. I, I yield myself in respect and, you know, I can't finish and I'm asking and I'm being interrupted.
I meant no disrespect, sir. I meant no disrespect.
I'll just wait. I'll just wait. I'll just wait and then let me come back.
Again, to anybody that's out there, I meant no disrespect. It wasn't directed toward anybody. I, I would want to run the meeting the same way I would want somebody to run it for me if I, if I put my foot in my mouth. So, uh, if that's unacceptable or, or makes somebody angry, I guess it won't be the last time I make somebody mad. Uh, Mr. Sparks? State, uh, your name and address, please.
Reverend A.L. Sparks, three oh two South Garfield. And I was sort of shocked when I picked up the paper and I was coming back from, uh, Arora, Illinois. And I just couldn't believe what I was, what I was reading. But then I recall an incident that happened to me some years ago at, at, on the school board. It was a word dropped and hit, and the individual didn't mean to say what he said with me sitting there. It would, what happened is that, and the same thing I'm seeing happening here, is that it's an old ag guy there that's been under the carpet. And then when we get angry and frustrated, we use it and we don't even recall the people that are sitting, sitting right next to us. African-American, as an African-American, we run up against them things and we're going into a new dimension. We got a, got an African-American mayor, there's opportunities to expand him. My daughter, my baby daughter, she, I told her one day, "Honey, come here." I said, "You need to practice staying at home more," you know, like that. "Oh, Dad, oh, Dad," you know? You all just, oh, focused, you know what I mean? I said, "No, because you're going to run up against something when they do. You're not going to be able to handle." And she's like, "What's on that?" I said, "You can't be going out there to..." She, one of her girl, girlfriend girl, she was a, dad was a chiropractor. And so they spent overnight, had the sleep ends overnight, but it's been more nights at their home than they did my home. So I put my, put the brakes on that because I know that's going to work. In our lives, there is a line out there, demarcation line, invisible. But all somebody has to do is push the right button and the wall is on. My daughter forgot, she got her master's degree at, on her end and moved to Chicago. Moved up there to Arora. I go back and forth and babysit for her. She ran into something. One day she called me, she said, "Dad, oh, Dad, Dad." I said, "What is it?" She said, "Oh, Dad, it's terrible." Well, what she ran into was the N-word. What she done, she done something herself when another nurse come running down the hallway. "Alex, Alex, could you come help me and get this IV started?" You know what I mean? Well, Alex didn't think. Alex had a boss too that ran the whole department. She should have had told us, "Why don't you see the, the, the floor nurse and get that straightened out?" But she didn't do it. She took it upon herself and she went in there and started that IV. It didn't hurt the patient. The patient come, come out smiling and looking good. But Alex stayed in the restroom crying. I said, "Well, what are you going to do?" And I thought, "Just, just think I'll go out there and kick butt." I said, "No, you, you're going to stay in that restroom and talk to me until that goes down." And then when he went out to talk, and you go back in there now and you apologize to that floor nurse, it looked like it was wrong, but that's something that's come, it's in our background, it's in our background, it's in their background, you know? And, uh, but you young people haven't been through it yet. And so she said, "Well, Dad." And I said, "Honey, look here. Do what you're told." And I said, "Your dad told you, you know, do this thing, you'll be all right." And she did. And four or five days went by and a friend called her and said, "Alex, let me tell you something." She said, "What's that?" So, "You know your old boss," she says, "yeah, they come down and fired her and fired everybody on the floor." You see, something you need to, you can't fix and you need to leave it to God and walk on. The N-word fell on me on the school board on the second, the first week I was there. The N-word came across there. But I didn't act a fool. You know, they paid the price for it. The guy resigned from the school board and went on by his business. But, and I know Tim. I know, he went off on me too, but Tim came back. One day I was fishing at the Memorial Auditorium. He came back and he stopped down there and when I took, I looked, I said, "Oh, my God, it's Tim." I didn't want to go through that stuff no more, but he came on up anyway and he apologized. And I, and I appreciate, I appreciate that. Our police force, I seen that in action and I want to thank, thank you for your, for what you're doing. But I remember when our last, uh, police chief was here, there, something happened because they're, and the police department wasn't ready for it. And I don't think they're ready for it now, as I'm seeing the same thing. And what it is, is that in the southern states where it used to live.
Reverend Sp, I'm s- I'm sorry, I'm after, I'm after bringing you back around. I just want to deal with.
I'm just, just coming back there. Just what, it, it gave me one minute, it's, it's coming back. I'm, I'm done on this, the last part. But something happened, is that when something happened in the black community, the police never went down there, uh, nothing, using an ambulance, go there after a death. Out in, in the, about, about what, uh, Maple Hill, Maple Hill area, they had an incident in what it was, a woman, they had a forty-seven year anniversary, her kid throwed it for it, well, it was a little loud. They had never experienced, uh, people working on three shifts. So when the police got up there, he seen, seen all these African-Americans there, first thing he done was pull out his mace gun and start macing people. You see what I mean? And that was, that was wrong because we didn't, that's because we, he, he didn't know nothing about background, our background, what, what's happening in our background. We need to get to know one another just a little bit more better. Amen. Now, I'm, I'm not trying to say go to church, but I wish you would. I mean, it'd help you out if you don't go. All right?
I'll sit on that one.
Tim, I think you ought to apologize, I'll give you my, I think you should apologize to the people. I don't make it, it ain't going to kill you, it ain't going to make you no older, and doggone sure ain't going to make you no younger.
I'm John Sandell, eight twenty, Easy Street. I, I'm married to a person from Chicago for forty-five years. But back to the resolution at hand. The biggest question I have, and I've read about this, heard about it, was what are you trying to accomplish? What do you want to do with this? And frankly, you've done it just by having this hearing. You give people a chance to go ahead and vent out what they want to vent out. This Tim will have this opportunity to put it to rest. I would urge you not to take an action against him, because that's what it is, is an action against him. I would encourage you to let it drop. He's had enough of this now. Let it drop. That is up to Tim and this resolution will not require Tim to apologize to anybody. That's up to Tim and whatever he wants to do. I've known him for twenty, twenty years better and.
I'm going to ask everybody, please keep it down.
And Tim, and Tim has the opportunity to apologize if he wants to or if he doesn't. But you are here, the five of you are here to represent us, the governing, as the governing body of this community, and we have a lot more problems than a few firecrackers going on. I understand, but I really encourage you to leave it go. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments.
If you decide you have to vote on this and you want to make yourself feel better, then go ahead and do it. Make yourself feel better.
I don't think, I don't think any of us, any of, anything about this makes any of us feel any better. Uh, so, so let's clarify this. Nobody's going to feel better regardless of what the outcome is or what we do at the end of this night. Uh, I'm going to take a couple more, but I, I am gonna, I'm going to have to keep you on a timer and, uh, yeah, come on, come on down, please. And I just want to remind everybody again, let's, let's, let's stick with the topic.
Hi, my name is Victoria Colbert, six eleven West Burnwees Boulevard, apartment forty, West Burlington, Iowa. Um, with the comment he made for, um, about Chicagoans, I'm a Chicagoan, I'm not a bad person. My name is Victoria Colbert. If you want to find me, I'm in West Burlington. It's not what you say, it's how you say it can be disrespectful towards other people and that is all.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, let me, let me get that gentleman, the green shirt, and then I'll, I'll come back to, uh, I'll come back to, uh, Mr. Starling.
Ray Buckles, uh, three oh one Maple Street, Burlington, Iowa. My question is, um, in all reality, even though we've moved past this point, we've had this hearing, what are, what's going to happen to change over there on Maple Street? Is there going to be cameras put up? Is there going to be, you know, I've heard several different opinions of more officers being put on the police force, you know, or just these things. What, what's it going to come down to, to where, what's this, when's this going to stop?
I, I do want to, I want to touch on that just a little bit. And I, and I think I'll, actually I'll leave it to the chief really, but I do wanna say this. I, I don't know where the fact that, you know, if you get on Maple Street, you're gonna, if you walk on Maple Street, you're gonna get mugged, came from. I'm there all the time. Uh, there's kids that don't have any money, they're, they're poor, so they don't have anything to do, so a lot of them just hang out and they talk and stuff like that, not bothering anybody. Everybody on Maple Street is not a problem, there are some people that live in that area that are a problem and we're addressing it, but if you read the newspaper, there is crime throughout the city of Burlington. Uh, there's just some focus areas that we wanna try to, uh, try to address. And, uh, we're, we're again, working in concert with the police department, with the council, uh, with other, uh, through, through meeting, through conversations to look to see what we can do, and we've already taken some steps. I won't even get into that, but I, but the chief can confirm that I was with him, uh, and a few others at, at a site and we, and we got something taken care of that we thought was really important and took care of that in the afternoon. But, uh, no, we're, we're addressing, we're, we're working toward addressing that area, but I think people need to be mindful as well as that, read the paper, everything is not happening on, on Maple and Vine, you know? Um, we've, we've had an issue there, so all of a sudden that brings that to the forefront, but, uh, trust me, I, I was, I've been in this city all my life, I'm forty-five years old, and there's been crime all over this city since I was a kid. And that was long before the Chicago migration or whatever, so, uh, let's, let's just be mindful and keep everything in a proper perspective. But, but we are working on dealing with that, and I appreciate your question. I'm going to, I told, I'll get to you, but, uh, Mr. Starling was next.
I just, I just wanna say, I wanna say this, I know this all came out of the, uh, the firecracker or whatever took place of it. That's why I just wanted to hear Mr. Scott, as I said, I respect him, I, I esteem him as a friend, I've known him down through the years. I'm not here to, to badger him, I'm not here to persecute him. I just want the record to be clear, I, you read things in the paper, somebody said this was wrong or this, whatever. But there were two or three things about the Chicago people, uh, we had problems with Chicago people got here. I wanna say this, and I, we stood here, two or three years ago, we gone over this, and there, there were people, individuals sit on that council, and they was mentioning whores and prostitutes and all of that. And I withstood whoever, I know who it is, I'm not calling names, I'm not getting into that. But I'm just saying, that came from the council, and if you check back the newspaper, you will find it in there. I have the newspaper. And another thing is, another thing you, I heard...
I'm gonna ask everybody, I, I don't know who's talking, but I'm starting to pick up again, please. Uh, we've got a rules of etiquette, but if you wanna talk, you, you can just step outside real quick, uh, you're, you're more than welcome to. But if you're gonna be in here, please, uh, let's keep the talking down. Go ahead.
I heard Miss Becky there said branding people, branding, she mentioned branding. We have, not we have, but to me, that's branding people. And the police, the very ones, if you saw the person walking on this side is white and one of them walking on this side is black, well, they from Chicago, well, they're more suspicious of, probably, if I was a police, I'd be more suspicious of that one if they was another race, let's face it, there's no ifs and ands about it. So we branding people, so first thing, well, looking pretty good, got dressed, must be, uh, dressed pretty nice, must be a drug diss or that, blah, blah, blah. So, I, I'm against, I'm against that for, for one, myself. Alright, people can move wherever they have finance to move, uh, buy a place, or rent a place, this supposed to be a free country. And you know, I think back, you know, I think back, gonna try to keep people out from, out of Burlington. I, I, my parents was in Kilkirk, we moved from Kilkirk to Arkansas, so I was raised up in a lot of segregation time. And a whole lot of things, my life was, was at stake many a times. And so sometimes people need to have some experience, experience something that some other race go through, and you'll learn to appreciate and not be so, uh, quick to badger other people or put other people down because they may be less fortunate or whatever. But I'm saying this, I'm saying this, there are many of these children, by the word that's supposed to have been said, and I didn't say he said it, that's what I would have heard from him, but supposed to have been said. Uh, that's, to me, that's a low degrading, uh, I don't know, no one would call a person that but God and get away with it, you know? Uh, the word that was supposed to be called, alright. And then these children, they come to me, was talking to me, and I stood there on that corner there and talked to them. I said, "You wanna come?" They said, "We had nothing, we'll go down to the city council." We had nothing to do with the throwing of the firecrackers then, but yet we labeled as that term bastard. And some of them are here, here today, maybe they may be less fortunate, they may, may, may not be dressed like you and I, but yet they're human beings, yet they're citizens, they're not, they didn't migrate from some other country, they are citizens here in the United States. And, and then another thing is, uh, when, 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 uh, when I was there talking, when I was there talking with them, I saw a situation, and I may wanna address it to the chief, and I asked them, I said, "What did the police say to you?" Because I was up there talking to them, I'm trying to get to the root of the thing. And they said, "If they're here," they said, "The police told us to move out." They were walking, they weren't doing anything, I was sitting right there looking. They were walking right on down the street and the car pulled, and that was the other day, pulled on and said, "Keep walking." Now, that's what they told me. To me, that's, you know, to me, that's, that's, that's provoking, uh, whatever. But, uh, uh, my last, my last, my last comment, and I thought this, I thought, hey, the thing, they say, "Just apologize, I'm sorry." I was, I was angry, hey, I'm done with it, you know what I mean? I didn't mean it, I said things that I didn't mean, and, you know, I had to go back and apologize and be through with it, and I'm done with it, you know? But, but to come up here and say, "Well, just go on and this or that," listen here, if I don't, if, I got to, I got to, I got to, if I don't take care of my past back here, I mean, and where I'm going, I don't know from where I came from, I'm gonna go subject to repeat the same old, same old, same old thing. And we're back down here again for some of the same things we were down here two or three years ago, some of the same things. And we had a meeting right out here, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying, uh, here were some people here, they commented, they talked to me, they were very upset. I said, "Well, the thing is, go to the city council, express how you feel," you know? Because just expressing out here to me or someone else, that's not doing any good, I'm trying to do all that I can, uh, you know, to, to, to bring unity. Uh, I don't have no, I don't have no, no white, no black, or this, that, we just need to see people as human beings, you know? And I said, and when, when, when a statement is made, uh, like, uh, trying to keep people out of, uh, out of Burlington or whatever, you know, I get to thinking back, supposing that would've been your ancestors four hundred years in slavery. And then, you know, and, and coming out of slavery and we still facing with, with the same situations today. So, so I, I just, I just feel, I, I always expected, respected Mr. Scott, I appreciate him, but I think the only thing is, just also apologize to him and move on, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Okay.
Hold on just a minute. Shane?
I, I, I got, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I just say what I'm gonna say from here. Up on Maple Street, you got, you got assault the school. And I'm sure the school board will sell it and give it, might give it to the city, but it's all on, man on it right here. Maybe we can get to the seller, and maybe this city council can do something positive in the lives of young people, like put, uh, put a...
I, I, that, as a matter of fact, that has been brought up before, but, uh, that's a topic for another time. Again, we, we wanna stay on topic here, now, I don't wanna get, get too derailed. So I saw the young lady, I'm gonna take two more, I saw the young lady with the glasses, and I saw Leslie, uh, back there.
My name is Mallory Scott, I live at twenty-one oh nine Madison Avenue. I'm very nervous. Um, I have learned though, since instant messaging came around, that you can't take the content the wrong way of what people say. I have lost a friendship over it. Because they, it could seem like they're yelling at you and saying the wrong things by putting question marks, quotation marks, you know, exclamation marks, everything. You've gotta listen to the person talk. If somebody doesn't wanna apologize, they don't wanna apologize. That's life. We, I'm only twenty-eight years old, I lived here for twenty-five years. I don't know how many people have said bad things about me, and I've never gotten apology for it. I don't know how many fights that I've gotten into because of other people coming to me, and if anybody has noticed, yes, Tim Scott is my father. I've had people fight with me because of who my father is, for no reason. I never got an apology from them for it. I did not see him throw any papers, I'm hearing, this is all I'm hearing. I'm not, yes, it's my dad, but I'm not sticking up for him completely, because I don't know the whole situation. But again, you can't read into everything until somebody actually speaks to you and you let them speak to you. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Leslie, we're gonna take one more comment, and then we're gonna give Tim Scott an opportunity to, to express himself.
My name is Leslie Brown, um, I'm on twenty-four eleven Valley Street in the Stone Gardens. Um, I was kinda upset about what you said, and I said, when I got here, I was gonna say a few things, but I'm a woman of God and I just feel like, I am from Chicago as well, I've been out here in Burlington for three years, and I can't, I don't know, by being a woman of God, I can't hate you, I can't be mad, so mad and upset, because you're hu, you're human. And you're gonna make mistakes, you know, we all do. I just want you to understand, you know, that I'm gonna lift you up in prayer, because that's what I have to do, but we already have to go through things just to make it, it's being black, you know, and I'm just gonna lift you up in prayer, and you feel me, so, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Leslie. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take one more, and then I'm, then I'm going to turn it over to Tim.
Thank you. I've been sitting so long, I think my legs are gonna work.
I'll tell ya.
Mark Ertz, twenty-one oh four Vaught Street, uh, I'm fifth generation Burlington. My father voted for Tim, I voted for Tim, some of you I didn't vote for. First of all, I think I, is it Al?
Yeah.
He was a foreman down at Case Company, good guy. And I went, I, I've been gone in the service, Department of Defense for twenty-five years. Came back, take care of my father. And all my father had to say about Tim was good things. If you ever knew my father, you know my father doesn't say too many good things about too many people. However, five generations in this town, and he said, "Don't judge a book by the cover." Tim, I went to school with him. We, I went to school with Gary Thomas, all good people. He's good people. He puts his foot in his mouth sometimes, but his heart, and I haven't heard that yet tonight, his heart is in the right place. Shane knows it, even Becky knows it, his heart's in the right place. I'm a little emotional because I don't like the division I'm seeing in this town. I served my country twenty-five years overseas, and I come back here and I need to get a gun permit? Protect my property? That's wrong. I gotta worry about protecting my property, that's wrong. Tim, emotional just like I am. He put his foot in his mouth, and I know he's sorry for that, Al, you know he's sorry for that. But we got a job to do, we don't need, we don't need any distractions. Tim, you need to apologize. You know it, I know it, my father elected you the first time, knows it, okay? Now, let's get back to business, because we got a bridge that's broken down. We need, we have police officers that need support. We have elderly that need to feel secure. We don't call people liars, we don't throw people, throw things at people. And turn the other cheek. When you say, "Al," turn the other cheek? Let's move on, get the job done. I know you were, I know you were. So, Tim, do the right thing, I know you will.
I'm glad I let you talk, sir, God bless you. Now, again, I know that some of you have been waiting patiently for Tim to have some remarks, that's not by his doing, that was my call. Uh, I wanted to, I didn't wanna have this be first on the agenda and have to sit through all of this. I figured we would wait till last and, and give, and treat everybody again. Uh, I know somebody's gonna look at this and say, "Well, I don't like the way the mayor did it." Well, they talked about Jesus, so now you got me to add to your list. With that being said, um, now I am gonna turn it over to Tim, so that he can express himself to a lot of concerned citizens and can express himself to some hurt citizens.
I guess the first thing I would say is that, uh, it was always my intention to come tonight and apologize for several things. The, uh, I made the statement at a public meeting, you know, it's public record, and I wanted to make the statements tonight, because it's a public meeting, it'll be a part of the public record. I, uh, I didn't do it at the council meeting, or at the council work session, because it's not a public meeting with public record. It's a very, it's a very brief record that says we had a meeting. And, uh, and that's, that's why I waited so long. I don't, I don't have the opportunity to, uh, address everybody in this format to where everybody has the opportunity to, to see it. First off, Becky, I do apologize. I, I, I waited nine days, not because Shane asked me to, uh, to say, to apologize to you. He let me know that I did hit you. I didn't realize that I had. I, I admit, I wasn't happy with you, uh, that night, and, and, um, and, and that, and with everything else going on, um, I, I took the action that I took. I had no way that I mean to hit you. I sincerely apologize, I would, I would never, uh, I hope I would never hit anybody intentionally without being struck first. Please accept my apology. To the, uh, to the black community, I, I, I do sincerely apologize. And, and I see the, I see those leaders that I depend on, uh, when, when there are problems. Freddie Starling, Al Sparks, Dave Solomon, Owen Sloan. I, I mean, I, Owen, Owen introduced me to politics, I don't think he realizes that, but he did. And I, I really look highly upon these guys. But at the same time, when, when, uh... Mallory, quit looking at me, please. That's my baby. When our police department comes under attack, and, and Becky shockingly questioned whether I had firsthand knowledge or not, I talked with two command officers, I talked with a police officer on the scene, and I talked with an eyewitness who claimed our police officers turned telegraph, that was her explanation. I had, I had information firsthand. I wasn't there, I didn't see it, but I trust the command officers and I trust the, 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 uh, police officer to tell me the truth. If they don't, they have no business being police officers. And, and that's the last straw. I, I can't find that as, as acceptable, no matter who it is. I don't, I don't care the race, color, creed, religion, or, or where they come from, it's, it's not acceptable. And I lost control, because I didn't know where else to turn. What, I, I didn't know what else to do. And I did say that in that neighborhood, there's been a problem. I said this to a news reporter after the fact. I said, "There has been a problem with, with young black people." And I said, "Tweens, teens, and twenty-somethings," is what I told her. And I did say there was a, a, a Chicago influence there. I know not everybody's from Chicago is bad. One of my very best friends that I met about five years ago happens to be a black lady and her family. And she is one of the greatest people I have ever met in my life. She has taught me more about being a human being than, than I think anybody I've ever met. She has had some of the god-awfullest experiences, and some of the greatest experiences, and she knows how to express it. She takes her, she takes her family, uh, well, and she's, and, and she's from Chicago. And a lot of her family's here, and they're from Chicago, and I've, I've met a lot of them, and they're great people. And, and, but, but there are some that are not. And I'm concerned about them, I'm concerned about those kids on Maple Street. Not the bad ones, the ones, the ones walking the streets, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about them. I'm not concerned about the bad kids, the bad influence, the ones that shoot fireworks at police officers. I want them to stop, I want that to stop. I want people to be safe in this community. And if I'm wrong for wanting that, no apology. I, I, I'm not gonna apologize for that. I apologize for calling a group of kids bastards. I apologize for, for if it seemed that I was, that I was singling out just blacks. I apologize if I offended anybody by saying there was a Chicago influence. But, but that's how I felt and it was the last straw. But I also told that reporter, there was so much more to the problems that we have in Burlington, and I pointed out that we have the simple things like the, a, a, a high-ranking official that likes to jog in, in the street with their back to traffic. And when she goes out around traffic, she goes out in front of cars and doesn't look at what she's doing. I talked about a former mayor and his wife had done the same thing. That, to me, that's a problem. You know, about a month or, or, or five weeks ago or so, I had a great niece that was killed. She was hit by a car, by a drunk driver in a parking lot. Her name was Denaya. She was black. And all I could think about was how many times I've seen people of all races, all creeds, all colors, walking in the street and how many times that child saw that and said, "It must be okay." And now she's dead. Those, those were the things that were going through my mind that night. And, and again, if it's, if I offended somebody, I apologize. But I, I, something's gotta be done. And it's gotta start here because we cut his budget too darn much. And we, we need more police presence. I hate to say that too, but we do. We need more police presence. You know, I, I'm, if, if you're angry with me, I don't care. Tell me so. Let's talk it out. But I, I think something good has come of this. There's been four or five meetings throughout town where the mayor's attended. Bob Fleming's attended, the chief's attended, the city manager's attended. And, and, and they're interested in getting something done. And I hope this time it works because for twenty years, I've been on, up, up at this table at one time or another. I've gone to Dallas, or Dallas-Fort Worth to, to a community policing program. I spent a week down there with the, the chief row at the time. I went to Little Rock, Arkansas. I was on, I, I was on the National League of Cities Public Safety Committee. Nationwide. We looked at all kinds of policing programs. We brought a lot of them back here. We started a lot of policing, uh, community policing programs, then we ran out of money. So now it's just, I, I guess it just boils down to people, people being good to people. And, I, you know, I don't, I don't know what else to say, counsel. I'm sorry if I embarrassed you and, and, and the staff and whoever else. I, I've got a temper.
Yeah, you do.
And, and I think you saw it that night. But I would, I would hope that you would join me in condemning any action that's taken against the police department. At the same time, not, not allow or expect the police department not allow the police department to run roughshod over any individuals or group individuals or anybody. But, but give them, give them the power and the support to fight crime. Give them what they need. I, I appreciate everybody coming out and, and saying what you had to say, both giving it to me and, and, and supporting me. I, I'm here for you and I, I don't care who you are or where you're from or where you live. If you wanna talk to me, you can pick up the phone anytime. And if Reverend Starling would like to come up and say anything else now that he's heard me talk, I wish he'd given the opportunity. Hey, Owen Sloan.
I, I, I am going to, I'm gonna allow one comment. I'm gonna ask Reverend Starling, I meant no disrespect. It's just that most people I just call Mister down here because this isn't church, but Superintendent Starling, would you like to come and have some, have some closing words?
Thank you. I'm, I'm very grateful and I, I, I appreciate that. And deep down in my heart, I felt that really, really wasn't the Tim, Councilman Tim Scott that I knew. Out of anger and out of, out of whatever was going on at the station and things like that. We've been friends. We've, we've talked. We've done things down through the years. And I'm just grateful tonight. I didn't come here to badge him. That's why I wanted to hear him say it. That's why I was upset. Because I like to hear a person say, "Let them speak." And, 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 and then we can make our comments or judge. That was just me, myself. And I appreciate it, uh, with, as far as, as far as I'm concerned. Because as these young people, they say, "Hey, we had nothing to do with it." And yet, we are labeled as, you know, uh, you know, these, this particular name and things. And I understand that bothered me. We have a building up there and, and not only building, but we have people all over the city. Sure, it could've blew up. I understand that, you know? And that, that made me feel awful bad, awful bad. I don't know what I might've said out there if I'd have been, you know, there and angry and upset and, and couldn't, maybe couldn't stop the shooting. And I'm, we support the police. I mean, we're not against the police. We support them one hundred percent. You ask chief, uh, uh, we support one hundred percent. And, and likewise, whoever it is, if they're wrong, and, and if they're wrong, uh, by, uh, uh, and the law says they're wrong, uh, let them pay the penalty that we all are to pay. No, no respect to person. And I feel myself that one of the problems, if we could get something for these children that they are asking for, they are asking for, and I think the city council should think about it. And I'm not gonna get into this situation that happened because it, it, it starts all irritation all over again. But I think they should have something that they like. There's something that they want up there in that area that they can call their own. And I'm sure there's some buildings around here because one was given away not too long ago. And I feel like they should give, give one over there if it's, if it's a decent building. And so they could have a place where they could stop saying, "Well, we don't have no place. We're walking up and down the street. The police is harassing us and this or that." And I know everything they say isn't true. I understand that. But still, we listen to them. They're children and I'm sure they're gonna tell some truths and tell some stories because I've been there too. But I, I just wanna say, I think you should really think about that. And this has been going on for some time. Have something up there for, I mean, I know they said the Rexplet and all these other different places, but they, they are telling me they want something their own. They, they, uh, they are, but anyway, they want something their own. So I think the city council should maybe consider that and maybe be able to do something and to eliminate that and maybe get them off of there. The street, uh, walking up and down, uh, there. And we're talking with them. We're not just sitting up there having church. We're talking with those young people and trying to steer them in the right way and get a job and, and get the clothes up on them and things like that. And, 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 uh, one other comment I wanted to say is, oh, boy, it keeps up in my mind. That, oh, and another thing is, uh, and I think it was mentioned in our meeting, this didn't come up about Mister Scott. No, no, we had, that, that, that wasn't about what our meeting was about. But I, I feel like that we could get to these parents of these children, these grandparents and these uncles and aunties. And in some kind of way that we could, uh, get a, a good relationship with them and talk with them and share with them, maybe the police department or something. I'm not trying to put everything on the police or anything like that, but I'm just saying, uh, the council, uh, you have the power and authority whereas maybe we don't. And, 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 uh, these are not bad children. Some, some are just some bad influence, but these are not bad children. They are, they are very bright children. They want something to do. And that's what they keep telling me. We want something to play. We want some praise to go for our own. That's what they keep telling me. So I'm just passing it on to you and I, I thank you, Mayor. And I thank you, Mister Scott. Uh, we appreciate you and we still love you. Amen. Bless you. Thank you.
I want to Hold, hold on, hold on one second. Hold on one second. No, Mister, Mister Sloan?
Let Owen come down. He's been waiting a long time. Let Owen come down, please.
Oh, come on. O N T Sloan, sixteen twenty-one South Fourteenth Street. Tim, I've been, I've been in Burlington since nineteen eighty-four. And I didn't know that I got you into politics, so that's a new one on me. All the years that I've been here and been, been involved in city council, I mean, not city council, but, uh, boards and commissions here in Burlington, I know it's rough. I do accept your apology. That's why I said when I got up here that I, reading the Hawkeye and, you know, people, when reporters report things, sometimes they leave out everything. And so that's why when I got up here, the first time I said I wanted to hear what you said, not what the Hawkeye said. And I understand that, that things are tough on you, all of you, when you get, get into situations and you see some of the stuff's going on. But just have, watch, think about what you say because when you say something, like one lady said, it can't, you can't take it back. You may not mean it, but when you say it, the perception is you meant to say that because you said that. So think about that. I accept your apology. The last thing I'm gonna say is, there's been some talk about, we're gonna have to get more police up there on Maple Street and all that. When you do that, Chief Byrd, I think, excuse me, if I said it wrong, is it Byrd or Byer?
Beard.
Beard, okay, beard. Tell them to go up there with some respect of the kids. I heard somebody said that, that the kids were just walking down the street and he said, "Move along, move along." I was, uh, I was in the first citizen police academy, citizen police academy graduating class, so I know what the job is, what you, you're up against and what you do. But keep that in mind because the kids nowadays that's out there, that's, some of the kids that have their problems, are causing problems, and some of the kids that aren't causing problems, they may not, when they come up to them, they may not give you the respect that you want them to give them. And when you come to them and tell them, you know, treat them like, hey, get along, get out of here, you're doing something wrong, hey, it might cause some problems. So just keep that, if you're gonna be doing that with the, adding more police up there on Maple Street area, wherever you put them, keep that in mind. With that, uh, thank you, Mayor, for letting me come back. Tim, I didn't vote for you every time you ran, but I did vote for you a few times, but carry on. Thank you.
Okay, okay.
I hate to leave you tonight and all we're talking about is Tim Scott's problem. And if your Tim Scott problem is our problem too, because we don't have the resources out there for these young people. And, uh, the fathers and mothers and the families, there's a lot of poor people on, on that side. I lived on that side. At, at two forty-nine, I was ten, over a year. And, you know, it, one of the most sickening things that hurt me, my boss, oh, he used to stay on me like hot cake. And then when I moved up to two forty-nine, they tried to find a way in heck I'd get the house. You know what they, he did? He left me alone. I don't know, no, I never could get that. But what I'm gonna tell you tonight, you got two proposals here. When I get home tomorrow, I'm gonna call two individuals in my family. One's a, one's a United States assistant, United States attorney. And I got a nephew, Laurie, up in Quart City. I want some information. I'm gonna get it one way or nothing. And what it is, is that, uh, the information I need is, is, uh, is the federal, can the federal dollars be, uh, given to the city of Burlington? Or can the city, can the city, uh, go and get a building and refurbish it for our young people, like salt to school? That could be a community center. In that community center, if you think it won't work, go right up to Quart City, Rock Island. They call it the Martin Luther King Center. And what they, where they started at, they got people out of churches that had retired and stuff, and they volunteered. They have worked there at their center. And for a young lady that, that had children, got, got two or three children, and she wanted a job, she couldn't go ju- you know, go to the work session, you know, because of the kids. Well, she could take her kids down to the Martin Luther King Center, you know, the baby center, center for children, and not worry about how those kids gonna be treated. I don't know why, we don't have, I don't know why we don't have a community center. That's one thing, salt to school, plus the old Alti Building. And I know what the price of that one is because I checked it out. And, uh, it's not so big that we can't handle it as people. I would like to see this council tackle something that's useful for our young people in this city. Look, if we could sit here and talk day in and day out about what about this and what about that, but action is the worst. I didn't put up that junk down there. I got, my guys got the work done. And, and you know what? They respected me and I respected them. That's where it got started. A friend of mine right here that worked along with me, he said that a night, if you could do a night police basketball league, that would be good to get, to get to know the young people in that area. And you could host it and you can try at Saint John Gym, it's not being used. Clark Field, Phil House, not being used. We got a lot of, we got a lot of assets here. If we really love these kids, as we say we do, you know, we'll do something. I got three, three young people come to me and said, "Reverend Clark, say, would you do something for us?" They're like, "We'd like to learn how to play drum." I didn't argue with them. I went in my pocket. I didn't ask, ask nobody else to do it. They asked me. I went in my pocket. And took them out there and paid for their drum practice and one planned piano. Actions speak louder than words. There's two, four proposals. I mean, I'm gonna find out, find out how can we get some federal, you know, dollars in, into Burlington when I get to talking to my relatives. I'll get back with you.
Get back with us. Amen to that. Okay. I wanna, I wanna thank everybody, uh, for your participation tonight in tonight's meeting. Again, uh, we still have to, uh, deal with this, but I, uh, I, I do, I do wanna thank you for, uh, for being respectful. I know that when you're dealing with tough issues, sometimes, uh, emotions can get in the way and sometimes people can get carried away. But I, I do wanna say thank you for everybody, for your participation and for, and for keeping things civil. Let's, uh, let's move forward then.
Shockley?
Aye.
Anderson?
No. I, I'm gonna say no, and I wanna say, I wanna say this. Can I make a comment as I say this?
Sure.
I feel like we've accomplished what we wanted to accomplish. I think this council needs to move on and I think if all these people can accept Tim's apology, I can too. And, and so I'm gonna vote no.
Me too. Uh, I just wanna say that, um, I, I already accepted Tim's apology. Me and him have already talked. I'm still going to have to vote yes, but, um, I do appreciate what you had to say. I'm glad that you, I know it wasn't easy. I know it wasn't easy, but, um, I, I'm, I'm still going to, uh, I'm, I'm gonna have to, uh, vote yes on that.
Fleming?
No.
Campbell?
Aye.
Scott?
Upstate.
Okay. Well, I'll tell you what, sometimes for, uh, to make the omelet, you have to break a few eggs. Uh, I'd like to think that we're moving forward and we're ready to, uh, start preparing the omelet again. And, uh, I can assure you that the council is still gonna be committed to trying to do what's best for Burlington. I do have one closing remark before, what? What's that? Oh, I already opened that up beforehand.
Things are not on the agenda.
Who's this guy again? He's a troublemaker. Okay.
I was bad, Shane. You thought I was bad.
I, I know it. And we hired this guy. And we hired this guy. Okay, I, I apologize. I, apparently I didn't make that clear, but anyways. Uh, now we will entertain, and I'm gonna take off just real quick, just for a second, but we will entertain comments from the audience in regards to any topic that we have not covered. So if it's something that we've already covered, um, we, we're not gonna open the floor for that. But if it is, uh, new business, something that we have not covered, uh, we're gonna open up the floor. I'm gonna ask, remind everybody again, please, uh, that you give your name and your address.
John Sandell. Eight, oh, nine, eight twenty Easy Street. I just moved, you know? You've already covered this, but you did not talk about it. It was on the consent agenda. You, you tonight spent four thousand and seven dollars, give or take a few dollars, on abatements. I would ask you to talk to your people at the league of municipalities, see if the state of Iowa's code can be amended to allow you to get that money from the existing See if the State of Iowa's code can be amended to allow you to get that money from the existing property. Force a sale of that property if you have to, to get your money, okay? Put a higher level of a lien on the property than you do, as a normal mechanic's lien. A higher level lien, a municipal lien, if you wanna call it that, that allows you to force a sale. Give them six months or twelve months to pay. If they don't pay, force a sale of the property. I would think that you could talk to your representatives at the House and the Senate in Des Moines and the League of Municipalities, do your lobbying for you. And let's get this, ten months of four thousand dollars or probably higher for a police officer, wouldn't you say, Chief Beard? Wouldn't forty thousand dollars be close hiring a police officer?
It's about half.
About half, okay. You got, you got half the money available to you if you just get the law changed a little bit. So I give you that as an option or as an idea to, to kinda toss around in your goal-setting sessions, okay?
Good idea.
You go next.
Yeah, any, yes, Dwight, go ahead.
Dwight Mulch, two thirty-one South Third Street. Uh, unfortunately, we did look at the time in the Hawkeye, which was six thirty, so my wife and I arrived late. So I just have a question. Did you act on anything in regard to the property at Delman Mae tonight?
At where? No.
Delman Mae.
No. That, that proposal was withdrawn.
Okay.
They did not, they did not reach the funding for the grant, so they withdrew their proposal.
All right, thank you.
Uh-huh. And they did, Dwight, they just, we just got notice today, so this was not something that we knew about before.
Okay, well, I will leave you with this public comment that, uh, myself and my wife would be interested in that property in the future.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Uh, yes, John?
John Ven, thirteen thirty-two Griswold Street. I'm not familiar with your voting. How did that resolution go? With the, with the?
It would've been voted down. There was two no's and then abstention, which was also a no.
So it failed?
Yes.
Okay, well, I wasn't familiar with that. I thought if you abstained, you were done. And now your vote didn't count. Okay.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. Uh, anybody else wanting to make a comment?
Shane coming back?
I don't know. I think so. I think he did.
He was waiting till you were done.
Can I ask if anybody else wanted to make a comment? Is, was there anybody else? Okay, well, we can wait a minute, see if he gets back here. But we can't wait very long.
Okay, then I'll talk.
It's been a long meeting.
Uh, Mayor, Council, Shalom. He's coming back, so I seen. Um, I had a lot of thought, uh, about, uh, some comments that somebody had made to Becky about, uh, charging for these fire pits. First, uh, I agree with that person. I think if we should, uh, you know, we pay taxes, we should be able to have fire pits without having to pay a fee. If we light our grill, you know, we go buy a grill at the store, we shouldn't have to pay a fee. My only concern is that in four or five years, if they don't have a fire pit or a fireplace, that they buy a commercial burner and it's rusty as crap and it looks like a barrel, you know, that's been there for ten years and that it could cause some, a fire somehow. The wind gusts come up, you know, somebody, whatever reason. Somebody had to run to the emergency room, somebody got hurt, they couldn't put out their fire. And so they don't have an adequate, you know, cap on it or they don't have, you know, a good, a commercial burner. Uh, and that's all I have to say. So God bless.
Shalom.
Shalom.
I got a question about that too.
How many, have you been down to a meeting yet this year?
No, no, I've been scared. Any, anyway, uh...
They got the lost time.
You know what I'm saying? I got a, I got a, uh, one of those. And I, yeah, not a commercial, just one of those pits. And I can cook on that anytime I want, can't I? Legally.
Where is, where's, where's, uh?
You can cook food.
Mr. Trexel.
Are you talking about cooking food?
Yeah.
For an hour at a time.
Yeah, I do it, hey, I had big parties.
Invite us.
Okay, I've done it forever.
Okay. Any, yes, sir.
Wendell Timmerman, twenty-two oh-four Piper Place. I wasn't sure that my comment would, should be made be, be of, before this. I do not know, Tim, but I was there that night at the Circle K. I'm sixty-eight years old and going on seventy. It's been many, many years since I was that scared. I happened to stop to fuel up my car. I don't normally do that. Um, but I realized I didn't have any gas and it was the closest place, so I stopped. I did not fill up my car with gas. I put some of it in, but I was scared. So I shut off the pump and left as soon as I, as possible. I wish you would've felt the fear that I have felt that, uh, night. And I think the coun-council should know that as a senior citizen, you know, I mean, we had all this talk, all this social media. I think, I don't take part in that. But that feeling is something that in the city of Burlington, I do not wanna feel again. I don't blame the police chief. He's pretty strapped with finances. That's not his fault. But you guys, so if you wanna protect senior citizens, then you should be able to figure out that some way, did I have people like me feel threatened or scared? I can tell you now, I will never stop at the Circle K after dark. That was my last time. Thank, thank you, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other comments before we bring this meeting to a close? Okay, I just have one last, uh, thing to read real quick. Point guard, did you, did you have anything? Okay, I just have one last thing to read. Uh, we have so many horrible things happen in Burlington, uh, that was saying that sarcastically. But we do get a lot of compliments from staff and this is one that I would like to share. I received a letter as well as, uh, Mr. Frenose. Uh, I will read mine. Dear Mayor, my husband and I wish to express our gratitude to the men of our fire department who graciously reached all of our, uh, checked all of our smoke detectors and updated them. They were professional, courteous, and were very helpful. Uh, Kathleen Sloan is one of the loudest people in the meeting right now. And, oh, I'm, I'm sorry. But it says, uh, Burlington should be proud of our fire department, uh, guys. They have helped us, uh, many times in the past, always acting in a professional manner. They obviously know what they're doing and they, and we are blessed to have them sincerely, Pastor John and Betty Larson. So I, I wanna say, uh, thank you to the Larsons for, uh, sending this information. It's always good to hear this. And, uh, I wanna say, uh, give a shout out to the fire department, uh, the Larsons appreciate you. So, um, if there is anything else, counsel?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
God bless America.
Shockley?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.